Building is also up on the street.
Right, but that building might not always be there. So I'm just wondering if it's in working with the neighborhood if you would continue that 10-foot wall back at least till you get out of view, visible line.
Chairman and Commissioner, if I could just add a piece of information. The entire General Industrial Zoning District does not require walls between industrial users.
Right.
In fact, it's zero lot line if they choose. So just, just a note on that.
Right, I'm just looking at we're talking about 10-foot walls, but we're not, and we're saying there's screening completely, but, but we're not, so.
Chairman, let me just put an end to this question. The owners have said we'll put a 10-foot wall on that north side.
Okay. So, okay, I don't, let's not overpass that real quick. So what I heard you just say is the, that, what do you call it now? What kind of wall do you call it now? That, whatever it is now will come down?
So.
Or you guys will put next to it a 10-foot?
A 10-foot wall along that north side.
Okay, so.
And then a 10-foot wall along the west side.
Right.
That wraps around.
Yep.
And comes down, then you have the building, and then finishes here at the property line.
Very good. We get that on record? Okay. All right, well, yeah, we'll talk about that more. Thank you.
That's all I had for.
Any other questions? Commissioner Frolik?
Yeah, I'll have a few for staff after this, but first off, I'm real familiar with this area. I used to live over in Sonesta Estates for nine years, and I could see Chef Steel from my backyard, so I'm very familiar with this area. And for years I wanted Chef Steel to move. No offense to Chef Steel. And, and I, I do see some of the value that you're bringing with, aesthetically, it's certainly improved. I did have, as a lot of people have echoed, I would have these same concerns that the hours of operation. However, if we can confirm this, if Chef Steel was open for shifts of 24 hours a day for three shifts, I could tell you, I don't recall that. It could have been, meaning, that's a good thing. I didn't recognize that there was a noise problem, and I was about as close as you could get to Chef Steel. So I don't know, is there a, how would the noise of this facility compare, or can you do a comparison, to what was there previously?
Chairman, Commissioner, this would be a substantial, this is a retail operation. So people would come in and out of the store, just like any other store. You come in and then you go back in the back and you pull parts. We're not going to have noise, or car crushers, or, or, not car crushers, or big metal beams that are being pounded and welding that you had with Chef Steel that currently is operating on our southern boundary. We'll have substantially less noise, substantially less traffic than Chef Steel did have.
My other question was with regards to the stacking of the cars. I appreciate your commitment to not want to stack the cars. Is that anything that is, is, that can be regulated? Or is it just up to the owner to make sure that they don't stack cars? I'm assuming they'd get a lot of complaints.
Chairman, Commissioner member Frolik, it, really for us, it has a, has a lot to do with liability. Because people are going to be going back and pulling parts from cars, and you don't want to have stacked cars where you're going to be pulling apart. If you're jumping in to pull out an alternator, you don't want to do it underneath a Chevy pickup truck stacked on top of the Fortoris that you're pulling it from. And so it's a liability reason that we're not stacking cars, which is different than I think what a lot of people are visualizing, which is a junkyard where cars come and stay. And, and they're stacked there because they want to get more cars in there until they have a time to put it in the scrapper, and then shred the metal, and then send it off to a recycler. We don't do that. We don't shred the metal and send it off to a recycler. Once all the useful parts in their 90 days have run, that car is compacted and shipped off to the other guy who then stacks the cars elsewhere, 10 high or whatever, and the, until such time as that car is put through a shredder and then that metal is then recycled.
Thank you. Those are my questions. I have one for staff.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Johns?
Thank you again for answering all the questions that everyone's asked, and, you know, I just want to state I'm sensitive to the neighbors' needs and desires, but this is a zoning commercial use, I mean, industrial use. And so I want to very be sensitive to the businesses at Gilbert, you know, that's what keeps Gilbert going too. So I think one of the biggest issues is that between the sound and noise and being seen of this facility. So I don't beat up the fence a little bit further so to ask you the questions. On the, the plan, it shows a 10-foot B-deck security fence on the north side. Is it already 10 feet, or is that just a mistake on the plan? It's, it's on the notes, a little bit further over the side. So if there was already an existing 10-foot B-deck security fence, I kind of see the purpose of that fence tying into the rest of it. But I agree with the statement that was done earlier about it probably wants to be painted. So I guess is.
Chairman, Commissioner member, the B-deck, it is an industrial look, we agree, but this is an industrial property, and there is B-decking that exists out there. We may be pulling or removing, I don't know which one you're, which area you're specifically referring to, but we're going to be going in and pulling and removing some B-decking or metal fencing.
So that, that proper, I guess my question is, is that, is that fence on the north side, is that already a B-deck fence?
I don't.
From?
No, I don't think it is. I think it's a, I think, I don't think it is.
Okay. That's what the.
Trying to picture what it is, and I'm struggling pulling it up in my mind. But the reason, quite honestly, why we want, it's a look, it's a personal opinion, if it's painted or the galvanized look, we think having a two-material 10-foot wall looks, we think it looks nicer than just having a 10-foot masonry block wall.
Okay. Well, I'll address my comments over to staff, then. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Just, just one quick question. There's an existing Real World spur coming onto your site and is terminating at the asphalt over by the crushed salvage car area. Is the operator planning on using that, or is that going to be abandoned?
Chairman, Commissioner member Anderson, that will, I don't believe that will be removed, that'll be, just stay there.
Okay, so they're not bringing Real World trucks on?
But they were not bringing cars in on a rail.
Okay.
Nor is Weinberger using it on the south.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think that is all the questions the commission has on, for the applicant. I'm going to ask Ashley to come back up. All right, questions for staff? Open it up to the commission. Commissioner Frolik.
Do you happen to have an aerial that, it's kind of like that map, but that shows the neighborhood, that shows West Kroll Avenue?
I believe I do. This one does, it's right here.
Okay. What I have on my screen shows it a little bit better, but if you can go back to the, The concern that I have is with that southern driveway from a safety perspective, and it, it has to do with left turn movements. That driveway does not line up with Kroll Avenue. And so you're going to have left turn movers going into this facility that are crossing left turn traffic going into the neighborhood. Currently, the way that this is striped, there's an opening because it's an intersection. So it's striped, it's, it's not a continuous left turn, or a suicide lane as they call them. So to most traffic, they would see this as a left turn into the neighborhood, wouldn't be expecting traffic to be turning left, heading southbound on Cooper, so I have real concern with that. My suggestion would be to simply move that entrance to the north to line up with Kroll. It will impact a retention base in there. I know they're close to capacity, but I'm a civil engineer, and I think they can redesign that and make that work.
Thank you, Chairman. If I can just quickly address that, this access point is a shared access point with the Weinberger transfer station, and I don't know if Raj will have anything to add, but, so this was, this location was approved as part of that Weinberger transfer station.
Thank you.
You probably have separation issues too, right, Ashley, between the, the distance between the driveway entrances, the curb cuts, I imagine?
That is, that is true, and that's one of the reasons that we have stipulated or conditioned that the northern access point be, be gated as emergency access only, because we have concerns with the driveways on the west side of Cooper Road. And one of the things that staff talked about, because you'll, you may recall that Sean Lake brought up potentially just moving that access point farther south, then we have spacing issues between that northern driveway and the southern driveway. So there definitely are some constraints with access for this property.
Commissioner Caffey, you want to continue? Do you have?
I definitely understand Commissioner Frolik's concern. Certainly would love to see our traffic engineer weigh in a little more on that, make sure the left turn isn't an issue, or a conflict with any neighbor turnway, turn volumes.
Commissioner Frolik, go ahead.
Yeah, to add to that, the other question I would have is, and I, and I do recognize this as a joint use driveway, which we would normally encourage on properties. Is there a way that we could make this a wider driveway so that traffic that's turning left into this entrance wouldn't conflict with the northbound traffic to the neighborhood? Or would be less likely?
Okay.
We can, we can.
I would just, yeah. Yeah? Come on up. This is the town's, one of the town's traffic engineers.
So this is Raj, good evening. So this, because it just came up, and I think whenever, we are having issues with these kind of infill development, and we are seeing more in Gilbert where you got a landlocked place, and it's hard to deal with the access and keep the spacing maintained. So I think here, I think, as far as I remember, we have run into issues, and that was the best compromise situation to come up with this driveway configuration. However, with your concerns, we can definitely look into see if there is anything else we can do to make it safer.
Okay. Now, thank you, yes, I think that's fair as well. Commissioner Frolik, any other items?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Ayler?
So I have a couple of questions, I guess. One, I just wanted to know, and I always get this backwards, so, is the use permit for the site or for the user? Does it?
The use permit is for the site.
Okay, so, so we're talking about for site overall. Okay, so the other question that I have, if you go to the elevations, and we kind of skipped over all the design side of this because we're getting into the uses, which is a very good thing to cover, but this is also to cover the design side. So my question on the bottom is the overhang that goes over the gate, is that a, because it looks like that's our fire lane, are we going to have an issue there with the overhang going over it? Because the fire lane is right next to the wall. I believe that's the fire lane because it's the only access through the back.
There is a fire lane at this location too.
Right.
I can, let me, let me see if I can see what that dimension is on the site plan.
I mean, you see the building is right up on that road, so.
I do, I do, and I show that, that driveline right there at 24 feet, so we'll have to look at that. I know the southern driveway is at, it's 20 feet clear, which Fire has reviewed and actually made them add that note that it's 20 feet clear. So I'll verify that, that that's sufficient on that northern side as well.
Okay, because I see that as, just as the design side, even if it's not the fire lane, a larger truck or something moving through there, since they have a lot of semis, just, it's red, but people might still hit it.
That's a great comment.
And now you're hitting the building. So, and then it gets to the, if you go back to the elevation. A lot of this is design versus, and dealing with the uses that we're, that we're talking about. For the front elevation, I think it's done well overall for the type of use, and I think we've talked about that in the original study session that we had last month. It's when you turn the corner, and I, I still have an issue, which was brought up by staff, on how this, it turns a corner and then it just kind of flaps out in the wind and doesn't tie back to the building. And there's been some design that was, or comments by neighborhood the same way. What, what are we seeing? If, if we're bringing in a new use, at least let's bring it into the, the new age. And so I, I still think I have a little issue with that, so I guess my other last question is, did they show, they'll have air conditioner units for the office space, did they, I didn't see any of the outline and seeing how, the screening of that.
They did provide that, it's difficult to see. It is right here.
Okay, yeah, I guess it kind of gets lost in our, in ours. So, okay, so, all right. So all, everything is mechanically is screened from that side?
Right.
Okay. That's fine, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Bloomfield?
Thank you. Ashley, it's a great case, but it's a case. Just clarify, for conditional use permits, which is what they're applying for tonight, that's one aspect of it, and the other one is design review, two different cases. Conditional use permit is for the operations, and so if there's any concerns with whatever stipulations have been made on the property and on the user, but particularly the property because it's going to run with the property, if there's ever a question on that, then the town has the opportunity to go back in and potentially revoke, or, or at least inhibit their ability to use that, correct?
Commissioner Bloomfield, that is correct.
So, so long-term, we have some assurances that, that they'll continue to, to keep up with whatever their commitments are today. Okay. I was, there seemed to be a little concern about another 150 cars a day, so I just want to make a comment, and, and it's not necessarily a question to you, but just a comment. I just looked up on the town website what the traffic counts are on this road. Between Elliot and Guadalupe, on, on this road, it's 32,488 cars a day in 2014. So that, I don't think 150 cars a day is going to make any, so I just, I just want to make that point, that, that helped me understand that we're spitting in a bucket here when we're talking about 150 cars a day on, on that road, so, thanks.
Other questions for staff? Vice Chair.
I think I just had three questions here. First one is, has the town staff reached out to the fire department at all to get any suggestions or thoughts on this project?
As part of the design review application, it has been reviewed by our fire reviewers, but in terms of reaching out to the fire department specifically now.
Okay. What's staff's concerns or calls with the masonry wall? Why are you pushing so strongly for masonry versus a combination of masonry and other materials?
Really, the concern is an aesthetic concern. We think where that transition is, we worry that it won't look, you know, the high quality that Gilbert's known for. In terms of long-term maintenance, we worry about that as well.
Okay. So for long-term maintenance, I think the concern I would have going with a masonry wall, especially a 10-foot high wall, is any settling in the, in the footing that might cause cracking in that wall. To me, that'd be more of an eyesore than versus, you know, a full-foot masonry with some sort of metal paneling on top. You know, looking at the, at the B-deck, is that the answer to go with? Probably not, maybe going to a corrugated panel or something. I, I kind of like the idea of mixing up the materials. You know, obviously, it can't be an exposed edge at the top, you know, maybe they frame it with some sort of steel angle around it, but I've seen a combination of, you know, masonry with a metal panel done nicely. So I would be supportive of that, and I think for the use as an industrial, I think it'd be, you know, it'd be an appropriate design for it compared to, you know, a more commercial, you know, retail or residential use, where I would, I would support staff in having that be a masonry wall. Last question I have is, can you just kind of remind, remind me and others, what are some of the other uses that would be allowed in this industrial use? And does every single use, would it require a use permit to come on site?
No, so every, every use within the General Industrial Zoning District would not require a use permit. There's just a handful that would. I guess, I don't have a complete list of all of the, all of the uses that would be allowed, but how I like to think of it is that this zoning district typically allows those types of things that are outdoors, or, I mean, it's not required to be fully enclosed. You see manufacturing, like we saw at Chef Steel, there's collision repair, those types of uses. The waste transfer station did require a use permit, but really those heavy industrial uses.
I'm going to look at Linda then. You're pretty genius when it comes to the LDC here. Could you jump in and kind of give us an idea what other types of uses are allowed there? And if there are any uses that would be, I'm not, I'm just going to say worse, for lack of a better word, than what's being proposed that would not require a use permit?
Chairman and Commissioners, in the, in the employment zoning districts, the, the overall intent of the zoning for the General Industrial Zoning Districts basically is for types of uses that require heavy trucks, manufacturing, food and materials processing and packaging, warehousing, storage, waste management, motor vehicle and heavy equipment storage, repairs, utilities, freight truck terminals. Then we also have a land use table where we have all the zoning districts across the top, and if I, if I scan down the uses that are permitted in general industrial, which I'm doing right now, I'm just looking very quickly to see if there's anything that requires a use permit. Ambulance services would, a heliport or helicopter, you know, pad would, and wireless communication facilities such as monopoles, new poles, not those that are added to. Sexually oriented businesses. Very few, as Ms. Ashley noted. Medical marijuana dispensary. Laboratories, industrial laboratories. Hazardous waste type businesses. Salvage or junkyards. And the last is the medical cultivation site.
Okay, so there's a plethora of other uses that'd be more not desirable from the neighbors in that area compared to a salvage junkyard, it sounds like to me.
Some of the uses.
Or salvage yard.
Yes, and sometimes with each one of those uses, there could be a different type of concern, whether it be traffic, or lighting, or noise, or, you know, that kind of thing. Every use has its own range of impacts. Maybe it's circulation, maybe it's access, sometimes it's buffering, sometimes it's the height of the building, sometimes it's outdoor noise or fumes, or generators that run. It could be a range of uses that the public would want to have some input on.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, if there are no other questions for staff, oh, Commissioner Johns?
Yeah, to go off of what Vice Chair said about the fencing, I went back to that again. I was asking the questions originally. I would like, I, I know the, the town has a issue with the metal fencing, and it's been addressed up here on the board that there's some issues with the, the metal fencing. I just want to put a statement out there about the, I, I don't have a problem with the metal fencing, especially how it reacts with the building itself. I think the building needs help to begin with, to get, break up that mass, and having that fencing and definitely not, not in the manner that it's shown right there, but something that's painted, I think would contribute to the front. But I think there can be a mixture of that, of as that, if you can bring up the site So basically, on the top part of that, where that peninsula comes out, maybe have a mixture of between a full block wall, and then at some point about midway through, then they can start the metal fence and tie, bring it back into the building. It'll have that industrial look, it won't be sticking out like a sore thumb to the neighborhood. So I, I think that might be a, a, a good compromise between the two. My other point is, is I agree with Commissioner Bloomfield that that landscaping in the back is, it's still, it's going to get destroyed, especially when, in the far back half, it's serving no purpose. So if you can repurpose that up the front where the problem is, there's a, you know, the, the problem is, this was, the neighborhood doesn't want to be seeing, seeing what's going on with the activities here, and the noise transferring from one to the other, and the landscape that can do that is being pushed into the back of the property where it's serving no purpose. So I, I think if, if staff can work with the applicant on maybe coming up with a compromise, or if we can come up with something here tonight where we're relocating some of that planning material up front to try to deaden some of the sounds and the, and the visual to those neighborhoods. And I do appreciate the comments on the elevations. You mentioned, there, there's some good points to point out on that, and I fully agree. So that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Ashley, thank you. At this time, I will close the public hearing and bring it back up to the dais for comments. Okay, Commissioner Ayler?
Okay. I guess, get a little different than normally, and getting my full statement, I guess I wanted to start the conversation, because as I see it right now, just is that as a use, it, it fits the property, but there's a lot of things that need to be controls that, to help out the neighborhood in visual, sound, and timeframe of use. So I guess, I don't know, Chairman, how you want to work with talking about the individual pieces, if we want to talk about the wall, if we want to talk about the time, if we want to talk about landscaping, or to just kind of throw it out there.
Thank you, Chairman and Commission. I also wrote down the same list, and we can certainly help you craft those conditions. If not, we're listening very intently to the philosophies that you're sharing with us. The first being the metal wall, and what I've heard from several of the commissioners, of course, was your articulation on what you felt could be acceptable with a capped, well-designed transitioning, as you, Commissioner Ayler, mentioned, from the northern wall and then phasing into the building with the background. And then you also mentioned the 10-foot wall on the north side of the property, and also the landscape along the perimeter in the back to be better used in the front for buffering, and the fourth, the hours of operation that you feel are appropriate. We're happy to craft those conditions as we hear you deliberate.
Okay. Well, I guess on the wall, well, unless you, go ahead, Chairman.
I'm good on having staff craft as we go.
Okay.
Yep.
I guess my two cents on the wall that hasn't been brought up, I, I think the mixture of use of materials is the right direction, but I do worry about going to just B-deck for noise control. I don't think it's going to be too much because it's under the building, but it is, as under the building, it's the same thing. It's the same material that we're looking at. And that, this is a good use of the, show of the material, but as we know, we would have to put a frame, and it just can't be with nothing structurally behind it. So, design-wise, I'd like to see a little more CMU. Maybe they go to a six-foot wall and then go to some, I, now we're just dealing with design elements, and I don't know where staff will go with this, but I, I actually like the, the CMU, a larger CMU wall, and then grill placed in front of it to give it, instead of this huge, long wall doing some breakup of the materials. So we've seen this in other, other uses throughout industrial, there was one that's being done basically using the, the wall and then adding vines, and, or using a solid metal to break it up. I, I think going this direction is a little, a little too flimsy, I guess, and sound control, but. but I'd like to see what everybody else thinks on the wall.
Why don't you go through all of your stuff, and then we'll-
Okay. Well, landscape on the back, I agree with everybody else. I like, and I know we have town standards, but I would like to keep the landscaping on the northern side, on the railroad track, but the interior property line, I don't see a need for landscaping there. And if we could take that landscaping and add that to the front, because if we can get a real lush landscape in the front, I mean, this will just help soften the edge of a recycling plant salvage to the neighborhood. I mean, right now, they have some, the minimal standards, which is fair for them to provide, but if they, if we increase what's needed on the right-of-way, I think that'll help a visual sightline. And then when it comes to the hours, this is where I'm torn a little bit. I would like to see, if they're, if they're starting at eight o'clock for actual use, then seven o'clock in the morning is, seems to be not six o'clock, and I'm crushing cars, where I think it gets a little more fair on that side, but I'm definitely open. The six o'clock, I'm not, PM, I'm not so worried about, because now we're in the rest of the hours, but I would not like to leave it open. I'd like to have ace hours, so the public knows where the controls are, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Froelich.
I just need a clarification on the comment that I had before, with the concern of the location of the driveway. I do understand that to be joint use. I guess my questions would be twofold. One is, that driveway is being constructed with these plans, that's what it appears on this property. The property that is joint use with to the south, I don't see how that negatively impacts a property if we were to shift this driveway a little bit to the north. So I guess my question is, is that something that we can work with the other joint user on to shift that driveway? Is that a possibility?
I think, Ashley, did a traffic, town engine, traffic engineer indicate that's something they would look at?
Chairman Zippel and Commissioner Froelich, I understand that that driveway is an existing driveway today, and is permitted for construction at this time.
Okay.
Okay, so to clarify, the driveway that we see on the plans, that has been constructed?
It was an existing driveway for the Chef Steel site, but it is permitted for improvements.
From the aerial maps that I looked at on Google, it appeared to me that the existing driveway was lined up with crawl, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's how I understood it.
It's hard to, it's hard to tell from these, but it looks like it's still offset just slightly.
I think, I think what we're saying, Ashley's saying, is that at the end of the day, this thing is already in flight. That driveway's already in flight.
Well, that's the question. Is it constructed, or is it being reconstructed in a different location?
What I heard, I don't want to reopen the public hearing, go back and forth, but I think I heard is, it's existing, and they're making some changes to it.
To bring it up to the current standards.
There you go. So that's where we're at. Okay. Other comments? Commissioner Cavaney?
Okay, so, let me step back, and then I'll address the few specifics. So I looked through the list that Linda was reading as well. I had been kind of reading through the allowable uses, and I have to tell you, given the industrial zoning that we have here, and what I've heard about the quality of the operator, and what I'm seeing is the screening, the distance, and so forth, I think this is one of the better uses that is possible for this site. And I certainly understand how there could be concerns, not truly understanding how it's going to play out once they're under operation. I understand that. But I think we have to give them the opportunity, given the zoning rights they have here. We just have to try to tailor the impact to the adjacent neighbors. So, and I think they're doing a good job. I do agree to the landscape, it should be nice to add some additional soft buffer along the front, if in fact we have landscaping offered in the back, that will provide little help, so I agree with that. I think the wall, I prefer a solid masonry wall. I think it looks a little more classier, I think it looks more solid. I think if you want to do offsets to create variation in it, you could do dogs on the wall, you could create a variety of things. I just, I'm not married to that. I certainly will work with the commissioner to come up with the right look. I just don't see any other B-deck in the elevation, I'm just, I'm not sure. And maybe I missed it, but I don't see any rates, and perhaps it's another material, but I don't want to get hung up on that. I think the point is, we're getting a solid 10-foot wall with a lot of landscape softening along the front, a cleanup of that front. I don't live necessarily in this area, but I drive it regularly, and it's kind of an eyesore right now, as you all know. And so I certainly am pleased to see that someone's coming in and doing a great job of cleaning up. They're going to bring everything up to current standards. You're going to get a brand-new parking field, brand-new landscaping, brand-new facade. I think it's going to, it's going to be a definite improvement, and better than what it is now, for sure. And again, given some of the other uses that I read as I went down the list, short of a helipad, I'm not sure we're getting a bad thing here. So, with that in mind, I've talked about the wall, I've talked about the landscape, the hours. Maybe the applicant can work with us on that a little bit. I wouldn't mind pushing it up, just maybe an hour, maybe to seven, just to kind of help mitigate any impact. But I was moved by Commissioner Froelich's comments, that having lived there for nine years, immediately across the street, and not even noticing Schuff had triple shifts, I'm convinced, more so now, that what we're going to see here is probably not going to be as impactful as perhaps perceived. So, willing to work through that a little bit, but I'm not necessarily unwilling to give them reasonable competitive hours.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments? Commissioner Bloomfield?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As I look at the wall detail that was provided by the applicant, and where they're showing the four-foot masonry, they're using two kinds of masonry. They're painting it, and then going with a four-foot, or six-foot B-decking, and painting it, so that it blends in and matches, and you've got these different colors on the pillars, and then everything in between. I like it, and I'm not opposed to it, but I think it'll, I think it'll look fine. And I'm not convinced that going all the way along the north boundary is going to do much good to anybody, because right there at Hunter, you have their wall that covers their yard, their building, their large block wall with a gate that's open, and then along that north boundary, they've got, and at least it appears in the aerial photograph, some parking shade structures, and parking for their trucks all along that fence. I'm not sure that a 10-foot wall there is going to add any benefit or value. I would much rather see the applicant make, put better use and better value to their facade and landscaping and softening up in the front, where it will make a visual impact and difference to the project. So, that's just my preference. And I concur with Commissioner Cavaney, that given the kind of uses, and certainly, if I was living in this neighborhood, I might feel differently, but certainly your concerns were heard, and I appreciate members of the public coming out and giving us your input. It gave us, it gave me some things to think about, and to contemplate and make sure that we're doing what we can as a commission, to encourage development in the town, but also keeping it controlled, and to the degree that we can. And I think the applicant's doing a great job of that. So, I'm in favor of the project. I don't have any concerns with the wall. The hours, I think the applicant has shown that they're reasonable and willing to work with town staff and with the commission, to create something that would be, give them the latitude to run their business, but also give some, some controls to the neighborhood and to the public that surrounds them. Make sure that they're not impacting their welfare, and their safety, and those kinds of things. So, I think I'm in favor, and I'm not sure that that's all of my comments right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Commissioner Ayler?
I'm just kind of back to the wall, and kind of different on the north wall. I guess, my issue is thinking about this into the future. We have to, as in Chef Steel, it's been around for 40 years, it's been the conversation. So, we need to look at what this will look in 40 years from now. We don't know what neighborhood it's going to look like, we don't know what's going to be controlled. So, what's being brought in today is what we're going to have to have for 40 more years. So, my view of this is, they're not stacking cars. I've been to pick and pull, that's how I kept my car alive when I was a teenager. I would go to these establishments, go pull an alternator, funny enough, it was brought up. It's exactly what I did. And so I know the use, and the nicer part of something like this, is that they actually give a little more room between the cars, because you have to work on the car to get what you need. So, they won't be as tight as you see in other areas, where they just smoosh the cars in everyone as possible. But my worry is, with a building like this, and the storage, is when you're driving down Cooper, is that you're going to see all this, the high storage space, and the pick and pull that I went to, in 35th Avenue, and wherever in Phoenix, started low. And then they got a really good business, and now they're stacking, and now when you drive down that road, you see 40 feet of car parts, you see engines, and it looks kind of cool, but I don't think everybody wants to see transmissions, and engines, and car parts. So, that's where I'd like to make sure that we're looking at controlling this, so we can, so the screen will actually does something, and it's just not all, because I'm actually a little worried about 10-foot wall, because it's a large mass. I mean, our standard walls are six-foot, and then we jump up to eight-foot, but a 10-foot wall, I mean, that's a story. I mean, that's the height of a ranch house. So, we need to kind of break up materials, and doing that is a good idea. I just, I also prefer the full CMU, but I know if you go to a 10-foot wall, that's a large cost, to build a 10-foot CMU wall. So, I'd be willing to work with different materials, but it has to be something more than B-deck. B-deck rust, even if you powder coat it, this is an industry that's going to scratch, because things move around, and then they rust, and, I mean, that's a hard control to have a metal like that. So, I'd like to see a little more of that, and then on the north side, I'm looking at it as what's visible from the right-of-way. So if I can view it from an angle from the right-of-way on the street, then it should be screen. So, I have viewpoints on the wall, and I don't know, do we have the, be able to take away the requirement of the interior landscape area, and then put that over? Can we, can we take that, or is that something that's required?
Was that a question for Linda?
Yeah, that's for Linda. Sorry, I was looking at her, so that was for Linda and staff.
Be perfectly honest with us, a little worried about that, so we would prefer for you to give us some flexibility, because it's a code requirement.
Right.
Yet we do try the best we can, when it's really a matter of function, so we're going to do the best we can. We hope you give us some flexibility on that.
Okay.
Chairman, just one quick-
Commissioner Bloomfield.
If, Linda, you made a statement earlier that said that there was no wall requirement at property lines between industrial uses, and if that's the case, then it doesn't make a lot of sense to require there to be landscaping there, if there's no requirement, so, just, so, just a comment.
I was kind of listening to what you said, and at the same time, what our planner was saying, and I do want to clarify that, the note that I made to Commissioner Ayler, is that we do not require walls between industrial users. Many times, those walls are very well-built, because there's a security measure. Of course, they're protecting their outdoor business storage, and their personal, their property, and their inventory. But if it's not required, and there's something there that is already adequate, we do not require it. Of course, that is why we have a planning commission, and that's why we have the public hearing, and that's why we have applicants agree to something above and beyond code. So that's at your purview.
Thank you, Linda. Appreciate that.
All right, I'd like to start to formulate some stuff here. What do you think, Vice Chair? You want to formulate some stuff with me?
Do we want to talk about hours?
Do we want to talk about hours?
If I may, I got a clarification on the wall that we were just discussing, and what Ashley is saying is that the applicant is already proposing a 10-foot B-deck wall on the northern boundary, that wasn't carefully described in the presentation. So that's already there, if you want to just keep it.
Yeah, I was going to mention that. They volunteered to build that wall, so, I mean-
But is that a B-deck wall, like a full B-deck, or is it like this detail of four-foot plus the six-foot?
It's a full B-deck, probably with framed, as one of our commissioners mentioned, for stability.
So it's a 10-foot sheet of metal?
On the northern side-
On the northern side. They've already had that in their application.
That would be a CMU wall with a B-deck. It would be a CMU wall that's existing, and then they're going to put up a 10-foot B-deck by it, probably as close as they can.
Yeah.
But Chair?
Yes, sir.
Please. As mentioned before, I think it was Commissioner Bloomfield that mentioned, given the constraints of that site, or the current conditions of that site, I think asking the, or taking the offer of the applicant to put a wall there is a waste of money. I don't think there's any benefit to it. So, I'm not sure I'd drive the applicant down that path, there really isn't any benefit.
Well, they may have a security reason.
And they're welcome to do that. I'm not saying they can, and if we're making that a sip here, I'm not sure that's a value to us or the community, yes.
And my understanding on that is, it's already in the application. So only thing that we would stip was to make it masonry four-foot, and then CMU six-foot up out, something like that, but it's already a 10-foot wall that they're putting in. So we might want to just leave it be. I would just love to leave it be, yeah. Commissioner Johns, did you have something additional?
No, I was just, that's why I was clarifying with Mr. Lake, is what kind of walls are ready. They noted that it was a 10-foot B-deck wall, so it didn't say new, didn't say existing, and-
Yeah.
So that was my point, exactly. If it's already there, why are we messing with it?
Correct. So, Linda, let's move to hours. What do you, what do you got, Linda? We've heard lots of hours here.
Commissioner, Chairman and Commission, I have heard from at least three that there is a reasonable start time at 7:00 AM. I have not heard a reasonable suggested time for close.
Yeah, I mean, six or seven o'clock is fine for, yeah. They're asking for six, I believe, in their application? Yeah.
Are they allowed 24 operations on this site?
They are.
Okay, so if they're allowed 24 operations for the site, and their only question-
Six to six, is that what their question?
They are, Chairman and Commission, they are requesting six to six with the flexibility for extended hours as their business grows.
Yeah. So, extended hours could mean, I apologize, Vice Chair, extended hours could mean, I think their application says Monday through Saturday, so extended hours could mean such things as Sunday operation, right? Which is what I am anticipating, more so than wanting to be open 24 hours. They would probably want the additional day. So what you're saying is, what we're currently okay with is initially granting them six to six? Is that what I heard, that they're asking, Monday through Saturday, with the option to expand as their business grows? Yeah, Linda, ironically, what's a noise ordinance? When does that start for morning? I know the, I know the end, but I think they can start at 6:00 AM, like a, I'm thinking of like a construction site, who, well, these people live on a construction site with the road. I'm sure we're out there at 6:00 AM, if not earlier, yeah.
Yeah, I think it does, yeah, start early, especially during the hot season.
Yeah, they'd start earlier, so, I don't know, guys, on the hours, where yet. Josh and I were talking, Commissioner Ayler and I were talking to seven to seven, but if they're asking six to six.
Chair, I think I'm willing to accept the six to six without necessarily the optional flexibility on their end to make the decision to expand that, but rather revisit the use permit if that's, if an expanded, expansion is necessary. I think six to six is probably not unfair for this industry, and it's the work they do, but leaving it open-ended to their flexibility whenever they choose to grow it is a little concern to me.
Does anyone else have that concern?
What?
On the commission?
Yeah, well- Yeah. Well, I mean, I wouldn't want to leave it open-ended. So whatever we made a decision with, let's make, and if they want to come back, then we're here.
Yeah.
Chairman, I can answer your question about the noise ordinance.
Yes, thank you.
So for industrial property, it's from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. It's allowed at a 60 dB A. And from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., it's a 70 dB. So it's basically 10 dB lower between 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. So essentially, 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. is, I believe that's what our noise ordinance is as it sits now. Yeah, for industrial.
So I'll float it out there. I propose, and we can kind of get a sense here, we don't have to vote obviously, but just get a sense of six to six with fixed for now. And if they want to revisit it later, they come back for adjustments to the use permit.
And Linda, I mean, that's not uncommon. We've done that, I think, when people have wanted to make changes to their use permit. I think in the barn on Greenfield, right?
That's a perfect example, yes. Our customers do have the option to amend applications after they're approved.
Okay. What, so the six to six, but leaving it stay, what about seven days a week? They're asking for six.
I would leave it at the same.
Leave it what they're asking for? I'm looking for some, okay. What else? Yes, you may. So if they want to come back, can that be done administratively or would it need to come back through the full planning commission review?
Chairman and Commission, a use permit must come through a public hearing process, exactly the process that we have this evening, with public notice, a sign in the field, the staff report and a full presentation.
Linda, what does that cost the applicant?
It's $1,500 and change.
That's, that's just to the town. Hire your consultants and your spenders.
Yeah.
An option for the commission to consider would be maybe a half day on Sunday for those enthusiasts like myself who only have our weekends to work. So maybe, you know, a morning till noon type of thing so that our enthusiasts in the community can take advantage of recycled materials.
I'd ask Mr. Lake to come sit over here with staff and give his comments, because we still have a couple other items to go through. I'm actually okay with that on the Sunday thing. Yeah. Look, again, my gut tells me they want the extra day. They don't want the extra hours.
They do want hours on Sunday. That is important to their business. And I would have to agree. I have many enthusiasts in the industry.
Yeah.
Who love hobbies and this is one of their favorite hobbies. And it would be welcome to have this type of business in Gilbert to encourage those hobbies.
So with that, I think a six to six, fixed hours, Monday through Saturday, and, you know, six to two or something like that. I'm just throwing things out here, guys.
Well, they open at eight. I'm just wondering, like, operational-wise, they don't open before, they need to prep and do stuff. That's why they're opening at six. So I'm wondering if they're opening at eight on the Sunday. I don't know. I mean, arguing over the hour. I'm just trying to give a little bit of break to the neighborhood for the Sunday morning.
Eight to two. I mean, I don't have a... There's no crystal ball. Yeah. So I guess I'll take my purview as the chair to say Sunday is eight to two. Next?
Chairman, I have a wrap-up of three unless there's others.
No, I'll take a wrap-up of...
Okay. So we could modify the existing recommendation to include a recommendation that prior to submittal of construction drawings, staff shall approve the resubmittal for a designed solid wall, six foot plus other materials such as metal or other block for the front landscape, as you have described, Chairman Oller, as it phases from the north wall to along the front of the building. So we can craft that nicely, but that's the gist of what I'm hearing. For the second, the same preface, prior to submittal of CDs, staff shall review a redesign of the landscape in the rear perimeter to address materials that may be damaged. That gives us some flexibility to either group them in an area where they won't be damaged or move some to the front, but not, not give us direction to negate code. If that's acceptable, we can massage that language. And the third, hours of operations shall be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday and 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Sunday.
Six to six.
Oh, I'm sorry. I crossed out the wrong one. Six, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. That's why we have a wonderful staff here.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I just had the one last thing to deal with, the design review part of this whole thing.
Yes.
And if we were talking about, and it's just the north elevation is how, and I don't know how to craft it or if we're even going to consider it. One, the overhang going over that driveway. And two, giving it a better finish because you have the air gap. And I mean, you're definitely going to see this 36-foot tall at point from the north side when you're driving south. So if they could raise that up to bring it in line, the portion of the building, the taller portion of the building.
I actually brought that up at study and it was kicked down then.
No. Well, I'm bringing it back up.
Well, look at you.
So I'm just, I mean, I just think design-wise, it's going to look odd because it's going to look tacked on, truly looks tacked on now. And if you just raise that up two more feet, three more feet, I don't know how much in scale. It is going to create a little bit of an issue. They're going to have to create a cricket or something on there to get the rainwater off. But I think that that's just a little bit to do to give it a finished look to the building. We, if we were looking at any other building, we wouldn't accept this as a design. It is industrial, so there is some leeway to it. But I think, I mean, this kind of northern view is, is a little unfinished.
Actually, I think, where's Mr. Lake? Where are you at on this one? I don't see a head, a head nod or a, do you even know what we're talking about? Yeah. Yeah, I'm seeing a head nod. So, you know, my thought on this one honestly is like the street or like the, the pull-in to the property, the driveway. We had our opportunity, I think we missed it.
Well, we talked about it at a study session. I don't think we missed it. This was definitely brought up. They just didn't answer the point.
They just didn't answer it and staff's still okay with it.
No, staff brought it up saying that they had an issue with it.
We'll work with staff to narrow that.
Linda, you know, thank you. Do you know the section we're talking about?
Yes. Ashley went ahead and created a condition.
Yes, she did.
Okay. Applicants shall submit to planning a revised northern side elevation to better incorporate the office into the existing canopy.
There you go. Thank you.
We got it. Even though, even though we're buzzing over here, we got it.
Yeah, yeah.
We can work with staff on that.
Okay.
One thing I would, I'm sorry, I'm out of order.
You are.
I am so out of order.
You are.
Sunday, we picked some arbitrary numbers or times. To me, a Sunday or a Saturday, for a lot of people working on their cars, there's no difference. So we would ask for the same hours on a Saturday and a Sunday when people are working for hours. So if you're going to restrict the hours, restrict them seven days a week so that we can have a uniform timeframe. But we need that Sunday time in case we decide to grow into Sundays.
Yeah, I guess we can go eight to six.
Well...
We can go eight to six then.
For seven days.
Okay.
Chairman, we don't want to also forget the traffic engineer is going to look at that entry issue as well.
Yeah, he is.
We want to stip that as well, just in, as we're listing all the steps, yeah. So, okay.
Chairman.
Commissioner Bloomfield.
I, I think it's important, they have created a wall detail that's four feet of CMU, two different types, with six feet of the B-deck. And whether or not it's B-deck or another material, I would like to see that they have the ability to go to four feet rather than make it all the way up to six feet with masonry. Just, just to modify that one point. Linda?
Thank you, Commissioners. I will put with a combination of a minimum of four feet or more.
What, with a finish? I'm assuming that just constructability, they're going to have to put this angle on top. Right now, it doesn't have anything. So a nice heavy angle would give it a lot of, just a little more depth to the design. So...
It calls, it says that it has to do it per structural detail and there's no structural details in our packet. So my guess is that that hasn't been created yet.
Right. I'd imagine at this point, we're talking in ideas. So right now, structurally, they're not there. So, yeah, as long as that has a finish too. I think if we did go to a metal look like this, that it had powder coat or paint, I would prefer powder coat, but I know there's more cost to that, but that lasts a lot longer. The paint, I'm actually a little worried about the paint because on this, five years from now, that paint's going to be chipping and there's nobody going to enforce them to fix it. So, and by right.
Okay.
So I don't know if we can ask for a powder coat or, or no paint.
Chairman and Commissioners, usually when we have this amount of conversation regarding a resubmittal to staff, we will pick two or three of you and give you PDFs to review. We'll get you on a conference call and we'll make a group decision sometimes. If it's cut and dry and we know it's great, we won't do that. But if it's even iffy, you'll be coordinating that approval with us.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to ask for one more round on the hours on Sunday. Please, Vice Chair.
I'm okay with what was asked for by the applicant of the six to six, seven days a week.
I agree.
I guess I'll be the outlier on that. I, I think the weekend, yes, I know the weekends are ultimately their busiest part, but they don't need the six, they're not open to the public at the point. We're arguing that the public needs for these hours, that the weekend shift doesn't need to be working and prep at 6:00 in the morning. So just for the weekends, I get, everything else needs to be done. But to try, if they're doing, we're allowing, because this is for any user, this is not just for them. So 20 years from now, this moves along and they need to expand their business because they're doing so well. And then they pick up another part and someone else comes in here. Someone else can be crushing cars and doing whatever they want. So that's why I'm looking at this on the weekend, just when their, their hours of operation are 8:00 in the morning. So just for the weekend, to be, when they're open for the public, then, then to make those hours. But seems like I'm...
My, yeah, my thought on that is right now it's 24 hours. So going to 12 hours a day is, half is better.
But that's only, that's, but this is a use permit. So this is where you make that control. It is, it's not 24 hours because of the condition.
Agreed, agreed. Now it's only 12, so it's better.
Okay.
Commissioner Johns?
So, yeah, I agree that we're giving, we're restricting them from a 24-hour use which all their neighbors have. So they're, you're kind of already being restricted. And they kind of put their restriction on themselves by coming in with the amount of time they have. We've already heard that they want to be consistent, you know, Monday through Sunday. They don't want to have an off number. And so I respect that. And the fact that the applicant came in and said, you know, I'm willing to restrict my hours to begin with, when they could have just asked for the 24 hours, which they have a right to have.
Well, they...
But we still have a noise ordinance that stands on top of them that doesn't allow them to be doing over-the-top noises to begin with. That's, that's the entire town. So it's not like they're going to come out there and do a marching band every Sunday morning and try to bring up attention. So I don't have a problem with the six to six, Monday through...
Okay. All right. Linda, you notate that change for us on the hours. And I'm going to call for a motion. Yeah. With Linda's help. Okay, Commissioner Caveney.
I'm going to give this a try, Linda, but I'm going to need your help getting all the steps in here. So we got to do this in separate cases, I understand. So I'm going to make a motion to approve case UP 171001, which is a conditional use permit to allow for an auto salvage yard in the zoning district GI on the subject parcel with stipulations as follows. Help me, Linda. The first, the first issue we addressed is...
Chairman and Commissioners, in your staff report on page four are the typical conditions of approval, one, two, three. Oh, is that what the DR, that was the DR one? Sorry.
I don't have an idea.
Brought up the wrong, yeah. But are we doing the DR one first or the use permit?
No, use permit. Sorry. So we just want to make the stipulation. So with the hours being six to six.
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week. With, with the wall being a minimum of four-foot masonry with a metal or other block material above that across the entire frontage.
Correct.
And landscaping to be evaluated as far as the ability to move it from...
For the landscaping in the rear perimeter to be redesigned with staff.
Thank you. And with the traffic engineer's additional input on the location and configuration of the drive entrance on the south.
Yes, we can certainly state it that way. I had put down, traffic staff shall revisit the approved access across from West Noel Avenue. So that'll give us an opportunity to follow up on your concerns, Commissioner.
Thank you. Were there any other stipulations I need in my motion? No? No, okay, thank you.
I want to second your motion, but I want to have a clarification. We have to, it would be in general conformance with the site plan. So the 10-foot wall that's on, on the northern boundary is, is on there. So, because we're not adding that stipulation. So they would have to be in conformance with that because it's on the site plan.
Correct. The site plan you have in front of us, if it's not conditioned, is going to be permitted, it's required to be built because it's on their site plan that you're approving this evening.
Right. And then...
Okay.
So, and then one last, well, I'm not...
The motion is on, yeah, motion is on.
Yeah, so I'll...
A motion is on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So moved, yeah.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second. Town attorney, are we good? We, yes, okay. The motions have been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Caveney?
Okay. So we're going to make a motion to approve case DR 171001 regarding the design review of the subject parcel with the additional stipulation that the applicant will work with staff to provide an addition, or a revised north elevation. Were there any other design review elements that we talked about?
Chairman and Commission, I would just repeat the condition regarding staff working with the applicant regarding the landscape design in the perimeter, rear perimeter.
Thank you. So that, and that the applicant will work with staff on the landscaping in the rear of the property or the east side of the property. Okay.
And Commissioner, condition number five regarding the same condition expressed in the use permit for the new wall detail across the front.
Okay. And to have the applicant work with staff on the wall detail, the 10-foot wall detail along the front.
And of course, Commissioner, also because we share the same site plan, that staff will continue to work with our traffic engineer regarding the point of access as expressed by Commissioner Furlong.
Including also the traffic engineer reviewing or revisiting the drive curb cut along the frontage.
Chairman.
So moved.
Do you have a second, Commissioner Bloomfield?
Almost. Let me just make one thing, one point in there. The applicant requested the opportunity to work with town staff and, and maybe shift that northern entry and make it not be emergency access only. Do we want to grant that? That was a proposed condition modification from him.
Commissioners, just so I can follow up with that, as Ashley mentioned, our traffic engineer did not require a traffic study. You can certainly condition that we work with our traffic engineer to assess if a traffic study is needed to justify such a change.
I modify my motion to include both entrances to be revisited by town engineer, engineering.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Caveney, a second by Commissioner Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Can you remind me again, didn't that case start off on consent?
That case started out on consent. So thank you to everyone who came out to speak on that item. Again, it initially was set to just go through without all of this discussion. So I appreciate you guys coming out and providing your input to that item.
you guys coming out and providing your input to that item. With that, we're gonna move on to item number 12, which was the other item we pulled off of consent, which is DR 16-54. This is the LA Fitness at AggroTopia, and Bob, you've got a nice shirt on, too, today. It's checkered pattern, today is the day.
Good evening, Chair Commissioner, I can't even speak anymore, I'm sorry, it's been a long day, and Commission members. I am prepared to present a full presentation. You did review this at study session, is there anything in particular that you'd like me to focus on immediately, or would you just like me to go through a quick?
Yes, parking, access, traffic, that's what I'd like for you to focus on.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for focusing this conversation, then. Upon the screen is the site plan. What is required in terms of parking is 248 spaces, now it's, they are, I'm sorry, what is required is 247, and what is provided is 248. You may have recalled at our study session that at this, I'll get to that a little bit later. So, they do meet the parking requirements. In terms of access, there is a right-in and right-out...
Bob, is the mouse working?
There we go, that'd probably be better.
Yeah, there you go.
There is a right-in and right-out out of Higley, so it's a restricted access in terms of that movement. And then, another movement is off AggroTopia Loop Road, which is right-in only, left-in-out, or left-out, and the residents do have the ability to make a left-in. This access point was agreed upon, as you may recall, with the same landowner who has developed the property to the north, just to limit and sign this to residents only, and at that time, when they created this agreement, it was to reduce the traffic that may, or could have occurred into the residential area. So, it has been reduced in that, reduced access there. So, I had, so, moving on to this other area, at the study session, you may recall that there was parking up to the perimeter, landscape setback. There was concern about stacking there, so they extended the landscape island to mimic what is across the street in Backyard Taco, that entrance across the street. In addition, they did put in the landscape strip that is also mimicked across the street for Backyard Taco as well. Was that all that was asked of, access and parking?
It was access and parking, and then, can you talk, Bob, a little bit more about that residential? Was it originally supposed to be different than that, and we've put additional steps on to make it residential only? Tell me how we're monitoring that.
We, from a police aspect, they cannot enforce that. It's a sign-only, residence-only.
Okay.
And that was from day one.
Okay. All right, yeah, that's the majority of these, but, you know, you'll have an opportunity to speak a little bit more after that. With this, is the applicant here? And if they are, would they like to, the applicant for this case, if you are here and would like to make a presentation, you can as well. We just need your name and town of residence.
Neil Feizer, Phoenix is my residence. I don't need to do any additional presentation at this time, I'd like to use my time to address the comments that the town may have.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for the applicant at this time, or would you like to ask at the conclusion? Commissioner Froelich?
I just have one comment. Do we have a graphic that maybe shows the south half a little bit larger of the site? So, it looks like we're near capacity, or near our required parking, we're one over, and I do have one that I would like to remove if possible. That's my only comment. This would be, let's see if this works, I don't know if you can see that, right up in here. For that spot, if they're backing out, they're actually backing into a crosswalk area, so for safety reasons, I would rather remove that if we can, and replace it with landscaping. That's my only comment.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for the applicant? You guys will have an opportunity to speak here momentarily, yes. Bob, you wanna, thank you, we don't, you'll have an opportunity at the end as well. Bob, I think some of the Commissioners have some questions for you, I forgot to have them asked, thank you. Commissioner Ailer?
Thanks, Chairman. The question, and it was brought up in study session, and I don't want it to get missed in the design side of it, is the northern corner with their 42-foot banner wall, I guess, I don't have a, and it doesn't show on all of them, but you can see on the west side and the north side, that wall that sticks, the rest of the building is in the 20s, and then we've got something almost, you know, 42 feet in the air. How staff looked upon that, there was discussions, I noticed the applicant hasn't done anything different, so...
Commissioner Ailer, from the pre-application, staff did bring up that the 50-feet architectural feature was rather tall for this area, and it was out of proportion to the rest of the building. They responded to staff's comments in their application, and then reduced it down to 42 feet. Part of that reason is also that they do have some highway frontage, and they did provide a photo simulation for that, and so this also answers another question that Mr. Cavaney had previously at the study session, as to what did that elevation look from the other side? And so, upon the screen is that simulation, so it does meet building height requirement.
Right, I understand building height, I'm guessing, looking at how it looks, because it, I'm more worried about what you see from Higley, not from Santan, I understand that they're trying to get over to the sound wall, so you can see it on Santan, which is what it is, but I'm more looking at how it looks like from Higley, since it's right there on that corner, and it's sticking 20 feet in the air past the building.
Correct, it does, and there's no denying that, but it's also, it does provide an undulation to the roof line, too, and it, so staff does feel that they did a good job with that, and providing that differentiation of height amongst all the elevations.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, this is a public hearing, I do have a few cards that would like to speak on this. Again, when I call your name out, please come up to the podium, you'll have three minutes, state your name and town of residence, and I'm going through the cards in the order that they were received to me. The first person to speak is Erica Bigler, I'm opposed to the item and wish to speak. Erica, you have another name with you, did you guys want to speak together? Yeah, why not? Thank you. Again, just names and city of residence.
I'm Erica Bigler, I reside in Gilbert, and I live about 100 feet from the proposed drive-through for a restaurant. We do live in a very different, we call it agro-hood, it is unique to Gilbert, is unique to the nation. To say that we are blindsided by this is a huge understatement. We are very concerned about a 42-foot, you know, that goes along our walk, that is used for bicycles and walkway pedestrians, and now you're putting this big massive building. We have concerns about the driveways, and we have narrower roads in AggroTopia. They are barely, you can barely get two cars down at the same time. If we have safety issues such as fires, things like that, we do have a very active community, lots of children, our bikes and scooters and everything are everywhere. We also have concerns of where the proposed trash is, which will be facing my house. We are concerned about having a drive-through at all because of the exits and entrances. Higley, it's a four-way crosslight, you have kids that go back and forth for the schools, we have a school inside of our neighborhood. If you get backed up, you're also interfering with the 202 traffic. The only way you can get back on a northbound route would be a U-turn, which is a safety concern. There's just a lot that's going on with this that doesn't add up. And also, if it does get to the approved stage that we are requesting mature landscape, we do not have a buffer between that building, you're putting a three-foot vinyl fence, no other LA Fitness in this area is competing with a neighborhood literally next to it. The brand-new one that opened on Gilberton 202 is next to a massive Isogenics five-story glass building with car lots on the other side of it. So, those are some of our concerns, also the noise, and also traffic with, not only that, the noise from the proposed epicenter, competing with the construction for both. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that? Sorry, I'm...
No, I just wanted to say, my name's Jacqueline Rathburn, and I also live in AggroTopia. With the exit that goes into the neighborhood, that's really a big concern to us, because it's directly in front of our homes, and our children play out there all the time, and I know there's a sign saying only for neighborhood, but, you know, even if the neighborhood was to use that street, it would increase the traffic a lot, and there's parking on that street, and so there's really only maybe one and a half lanes to drive through, and with children crossing the street and things, there's definitely some safety concerns, even if only the neighborhood was to use it.
Okay, we don't normally do this, I'm gonna go off-script, I have a question, because Backyard Taco's living there now, right? So, it's not a concept anymore, it's there, and it's extremely popular. They have a little side exit, you know, from the back, you can exit out into the community. This is similar, how is that working? You know, in our minds, it looked one way, right? And now, it's really happening, so what's really happening, because it looks like if you turn, well, when you turn out of there, you literally could pull right into somebody's driveway.
Right, right. I think that the orientation of the Backyard Taco Plaza is kind of faced towards Higley Road, whereas this is faced, you know, kind of the opposite direction, and the parking lot is really facing our homes. Whereas Backyard Taco, there's a few rows of parking, but the majority of the business parking is parking in front.
So, you guys aren't seeing a lot of flow traffic through that little...
And their drive-through's not open yet, so...
Right, yeah, I know their drive-through's, but in the back, where they can drive into the community.
In the back, no.
Yeah, okay, fair enough, thank you. Was that it? Okay, all right, thank you, guys. Again, there are quite a few cards that wish to speak, so I'm asking for new information up at the dais when I call your name. It's Harsha Hakal, and I apologize if I've butchered your name, please, come up to the dais, or the podium, and provide your name and town of residence, please.
You're pretty close, so my name is Harsha Hakal, so very close.
I was very close, yeah.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and Commissioners, for giving the time to talk to you for a few minutes, I think you said three minutes. So, like Erica, I'm also resident at AggroTopia. I've been in AggroTopia for about 10 years, and so I do bring up some of the concerns that Erica brought up. One is the parking concern. Looking across the way to Backyard Taco, it's an extremely popular restaurant, I've gone there, walked over there with my kids. Usually, it's virtually impossible to find a parking spot there. Talked to some of the other tenants in the building, they're concerned about having enough parking space for themselves, so what I'm wondering is, with LA Fitness going up right across the way, are you gonna see a lot of overflow parking coming in from Backyard Taco and those established into the LA Fitness parking lot? If that happens, does LA Fitness have enough parking for themselves? Next question is, with the construction of that area, are you starting to see a lot of patrons starting to park along AggroTopia Loop, and thus impacting the neighborhood itself? So, I am, I like the idea of putting commercial development there, don't get me wrong, I'm just concerned about the parking situation, the fact that you asked Erica, sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Jacqueline.
Jacqueline, about how Backyard Taco is oriented differently than Backyard Taco, is oriented more in toward AggroTopia Loop and not against Higley. That is a question and concern for myself. The final thing is architecture. AggroTopia, as you know, has a very unique architecture, not just in Gilbert, but all of Phoenix. So, the question is, how does this architecture play into what AggroTopia is, what Joe Johnson's vision for AggroTopia was about 14, 15 years ago? Some of you on the staff may remember that time period, of what Joe's actual vision for AggroTopia was. And the question is, how does this fit into it? Does it even fit into it? So, thank you very much, very much.
Thank you. The next person, I have a, it's Monty, I think Wolf, it says, "I wish to speak," but doesn't say if in favor or opposed, so if you could come up and give me your name and town of residence, and let me know if you're speaking...
I have two for the loud, and she's...
Oh, she is, is that Kat? Okay, you want to come up, too, Kat?
Yeah, why not?
Now, are you guys in favor or opposed?
You know, excuse me, first of all, we appreciate what you're doing here. And just a quick aside, I was a member of a city council, Muckeltoe Washington, which includes the Boeing airplane, where the 747s are built, such. So, I sat in your seats, and I know what it's like, at least appreciate when people would come in, that's been an airport way before Boeing, and the people would move in, and then they would bring a lot of objections, so I could kind of appreciate that. But what strikes me, and it's been excellently brought up here, my daughter Kathy will have other comments, but, I guess, last first, Joe Johnson and the concept, when you, as you know, you go into AggroTopia, it's almost like turning back the clock 50, 60 years, and we can't make that whole, your town, Gilbert, that way, but it seems that, I don't know, perhaps not, but that architecture is just totally opposite of what the concept of the community is. But more so, my concern, my address is, my wife and I live in Gold Canyon, we own the house that my daughter is in at 1325?
3125.
Oh, 31, yeah, 3125, Camellia, so we are just, if you look at your map there, if you come right to the end where it curves, where Camellia picks up, and as it turns west, ours is the second house in, so we're very much impacted overall, and we understand that. And we didn't move in thinking that there's always gonna be an orange grove there, but at the same time, that is a tricky road right now, that, let's see, coming out and around, and then picking up the access to Higley out of that neighborhood, and you have Taco Place in, and I can't comment on that, but I do know, looking at this, and the use permit, what they're asking, that a drive-in is probably one of the most traffic-intensive projects you can put anywhere, and to pick that one, and sticking it right there, LA Fitness is something else, you know, we all know, you just park, get up and going, but a drive-in, looking at how that loops, and trying to figure out how that traffic flow is gonna go, I just can't understand how it's ever going to be made workable without the jam up along that north-south road for Camellia, but I appreciate that, thanks.
Thank you, Monty. Is it Catherine?
Cat.
Kat, Kat.
Kathleen, Kathy.
Kathleen.
I have a lot of names. So, yeah, Kat Anderson Wolf, and I live in Gilbert, as my dad just mapped out for you. And, yeah, thanks for letting us speak tonight. A lot of my concerns have already been addressed, so I think I would like to focus on landscaping and lighting. From what I can tell from the plan, the landscape doesn't reflect the ethos of the community at all. The size of the building is disproportionate, and I get that we maybe don't have a lot of say on the building, but I would like to ask that landscaping would create a more significant buffer. So, I don't know if that means poplars and trees that are going to, you know, from a standing level, create enough of a block so that you're not really feeling the immensity of that big box building, but that would be my preference at the top of Heartland, where it turns into Camellia, where it... where it runs parallel to the west side of the actual LA Fitness, to do a really sizable green screen, basically, there. It says on the notes that it's 18.8% landscaping. I wonder if that includes the, that reserved land that's opposite Backyard Taco. It doesn't look like 20% landscaping if you don't include that. So I would hope that it would be more than just mostly gravel with the occasional tree. I think it needs to be much more mature planting and really have a green overall feel to it and not just a random tree feel to it. What was the other one? Oh, and then the lighting. I'm really concerned that you have 25-foot lights in the parking lot because that's adjacent to homes that are about that high, and a lot of the, I think almost all the homes over there have bedrooms that face that, that face Heartland. So if you have lighting that high and it's not moderated somehow, so I'm wondering why, if you have 14-foot lights by the drive-through, can you not do 14-foot lights all the way through? Or at least plant trees that are as high as the lights and create some sort of more natural light buffer there? I still have 48 seconds. All right, then I would say, on the drive-through, I would, I don't know even if this is a way, the time to express kind of our wishes for that, but we have a thriving kind of maker community in a small-town, local, homegrown feel for all of the businesses in the area. So I get we might get a chain, but I would hope that we would get something that is not, not a burger place. We don't want the burger smells. We don't want the burger dumpsters that are right by Erica's backyard. Whatever we can do to encourage something small. My preference would be not a drive-through at all, but a sit-down restaurant. I think that would help with the impact of traffic. I think traffic's going to be a mess. Speed bumps, since you can't actually legally control that residential access, then do whatever you can through other means to try to keep people from using that street unless they really want to.
Thank you, Kat.
Thank you.
All right, the... You got to ask up there. We won't be able to hear you.
I was curious. I didn't see what the traffic flow is now and what the proposed traffic flow is. And if it's there, I'd like to know, but it would be helpful to get that information because of comparison would help greatly in determining where this is going.
Okay. Thank you. The rest of them are in opposition as well, but don't want us to speak, but I want to reach you into the recording. Jacqueline is opposed to the item but does not wish to speak. It's Jacqueline Rathbun. Joel Fieldman is opposed to the item, does not wish to speak. As common as the size and function of this operation is too close to a residential neighborhood. And then it's, it says the Thunes, and it says they are opposed to the item, do not wish to speak, no entrance for traffic on Heartland. So those are all. Are there any others that are here to speak on item number 12 that unfortunately did not get to fill out a form? Can you please fill out a form in the back? Bring it on up to you, on up. Yeah, you can fill it out while you're up there speaking, just if you could give us your name, town of residence.
My name is Rick Nussloth. I live in Agratopia, so Gilbert. I just have one question. It's been brought up a couple times, but I'm going to clarify with a question for you. We already have one drive-through on Agratopia Loop now, and we're going to be adding a second drive-through. Have there actually been any type of traffic study to look at that? You know, we have a lot of traffic coming in and out off of Agratopia Loop and Higley now. If we add another drive-through, I would want to know, before you add that into a residential community, that we've actually looked at the traffic pattern and the impact it's going to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, if you could just take a few minutes to fill it out and give that to the staff. Appreciate it. Okay. All right, I'd like to ask the applicant if they could come back up. You guys will have an additional five minutes to make any additional comments based on what was brought up.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name's Traver Jones. I'm with Kim Lee Horn. We are the site civil engineer for this development. I'll just address a few of the items that were brought up as I wrote them down. A few of the residents had concerns with the driveway on, onto Heartland. We are here on behalf of LA Fitness, and to be honest with you, we're not exactly happy about the driveway onto Heartland either. It's a town requirement, and unfortunately, we, as we understand it, we can't get rid of it. So that, as far as it's been presented to us, needs to stay. Other traffic issues, as part of the design review submittal, we did a traffic trip generation study to see how the proposed fitness center and restaurant use compared to the trips that were anticipated for this development. And that traffic study found that we are not generating any trips above and beyond what was originally anticipated, and that the surrounding roadway network, which is mainly Agratopia Road and Higley, has sufficient capacity to support this development. Also speak on the landscaping, since my company is also handling the site landscaping. I'm a civil engineer, not a landscaper, but I will say that the landscaping palette, as far as the species and maturity and types of trees that are planned on the site, are based on the Agratopia community standards. They're something that we actually don't have a ton of say in. We use their Agratopia palette, so based on that, the landscaping we're providing should match the remainder of the community. The final item I'll touch on, someone brought up the three-foot white picket fence, and again, this is a Agratopia standard that we're matching to be consistent with the remainder of the development. Thank you. Any questions before I step back and turn it over to architecture?
Are there any questions for the applicant from the commission? Commissioner Forley.
I just had one question for clarification. It was brought up that the lighting is 25 feet in height, but when I look at the plan, I see 14-foot-high lights. What is the height?
I believe it is 14. It's 14 feet.
So the light, the lighting is 14 feet within the site? Okay. Thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Okay, so I just have a couple of questions about the drive. That's town-driven, is what you're saying. So if we came in as a town and said, "Take it out," you would take it out? Yeah. I wish it was that easy, but I just want to make clarification there, that it's not LA Fitness that wants to put the drive-in. It's a town's traffic code that's generating that. And then the second section is, I have a place in Morrison Ranch, similar to Agratopia. They have very specific guidelines on what they want things to look like. And so with the landscaping, I'm not sure that the comment is so much is the type of landscaping, it's the size of landscaping. So trees, bushes, things that you would want to put in. If it's saying a 15-inch box, would you guys be willing to put in 24-inch? I think is really kind of the question that they're asking, so that it looks more mature, doesn't look brand-new, but looks like it's been there for 15 years, like the community. And I'm seeing some heads shake in the back, so I'm assuming that's more of the reason behind the question, where are you guys at on something like that? You guys probably can't make that decision, huh?
I think we would certainly consider it if that was what we need to do to...
Okay. Okay. Fair enough. Any other questions for the applicant? Any other comments that you guys would like to make before I...
So it was asked about the architecture. What kind of architectural input from the Agratopia theme did you use in developing the scheme you have here?
This is a, the new prototype for an LA Fitness building, so it is, it is their prototype. However, we did go through the review process of Agratopia through the HOA. We weren't asked to provide any presentations there, but we did receive an approval from Agratopia HOA Board. I'm not sure if they presented it in one of their meetings or not. I believe they did, and we have an approval from them. And then we've incorporated any of their design guidelines into the project, such as the fencing and allowable materials and all that.
Okay. And you gave them presentation materials to review. You just didn't go to give a presentation?
Correct. We gave a similar package to what you have received here today.
Okay, so the Agratopia HOA has seen this, has reviewed the materials, the elevations, the look and feel, and has said, "Good."
We have an approval.
Got it. Okay, thanks. Okay. Commissioner Ailer.
So I guess there, so on that letter from the HOA, they didn't have any conditions or stipulations? They just said, "This is good"?
I'd have to dig up the letter. I don't recall. We've, we received that letter many months ago at this point.
Commissioner Ailer, real quick, just having some knowledge of this. You know, they, Agratopia probably wouldn't even be okay with you coming to the town until they've had their, all of their stipulations met.
Correct. We couldn't submit until we had HOA approval.
Correct.
Right. Okay. I still have concern of the 42-foot sign wall, but that's not where I'm looking at right now. I guess, is there, and this is on the civil side, the drive, I know staff has looked at this, but, and it was a question brought up, but how tight that, the drive-by, Agratopia Loop, the one coming out, right there on the corner, is there something driving that not coming from the other lane? So you're another, you're in, I don't know, 18, 19, so 34 more feet on the other drive aisle? Why is it driven there?
It's located there for a few reasons. First of all, if you look at the very southeast corner of the site, there's a rectangular area that's an open space preserve area. We can't put the driveway there because effectively, we don't own the parcel. It belongs to the HOA. Also, this location aligns up with the existing driveway for Backyard Taco that's right across the street.
Okay. Yeah, we just don't see it cross the street in the plan. And then what control, or is there a control, like an additional pork chop or something pushing the left turn only, or it's just painted on the ground?
It's just painted on the ground.
I'm just trying to see if there's a way to push that traffic from going back into the community. I mean, I think we all have an issue with the entrance into Heartland, but I guess there's nothing we can do at this point on that. I just don't want to have two points pushing into, into the neighborhood.
I agree with you 100% on that, and a couple things I'll add. Pork chop at that location wouldn't necessarily be feasible because it would interfere, it's such a narrow driveway. Pork chop could interfere with emergency vehicle and trash vehicles getting in and out of there. And also, if you look at a larger, larger map of the area, Agratopia, to go anywhere westbound on Agratopia Loop is pretty circuitous. So I wouldn't, I would think it'd be few and far between to go through Agratopia Loop to get anywhere.
And then I guess the design of the pad building is more in concept for whoever comes in, it's going to be held to somewhat of that standard, but it'll be modified to whatever that end-up user is.
Correct.
Okay. Because I'm looking at, and this is what's brought up in study session, was that driveway, right now, you just have the cover, which is required by our town, which is good, but is just kind of tacked on there. And seeing if, I think, since this faces Agratopia Loop, that if you could make more of a solid wall there, that where the two columns are, at least screens the driveway window from the right-of-way. And so when you're driving in, but...
With a green screen, screening that.
Maybe I didn't get that one on there. It looked like it...
This area right here, this area right here is a green screen.
Okay. It kind of blends into the... Okay. Well, that's what it is.
Other, other questions for the applicant? From the commission? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions for, for Bob at this time?
Yeah.
Okay. Vice Chair?
No, I'm sorry.
No, yet? Answered already? Any other questions for Bob? Commissioner Cavaney?
So just, it's obviously been talked about a lot. Just want to see if you know, from the town perspective, why we're requiring that exit onto Heartland?
It was agreed upon. Also, it was part of traffic's requirement and also for fire safety.
So it is required by fire safety?
Correct. And that was my conversation with Linda just now.
Okay.
If it were possible to remove it, because I know the applicant would like to get rid of it, but that's, that was already visited in the last application.
And it meets all the widths and radiuses for fire access? Because I just looked at it on Google Earth, and it doesn't look any wider than a bike trail, almost. It's very narrow, so I don't know. I'm curious.
And it looks like they have fire access in the back of the building, because there's an area of DG that's held out, so in the back, where we're going to have a bear spot, which we need since it's fire access. But if you look at the north side of the building, there's, there's a stabilize for a fire lane in the north side of the building, too. So...
Just, yeah, okay. I mean, I understand the traffic has probably looked at this, but I guess we've got everybody else saying, "Why, why, why?" And I guess just want to make sure. That's all. Yeah.
Okay. Linda?
Chairman and Commissioner, I was involved in extensive traffic research on that location off of Heartland, both with Backyard Taco, that led the direction for this property. Since the landowner owned both properties, that was a condition of approval for Backyard Taco, that they would both have this reciprocal-type access, because if without it, there was going to be extensive work to put in around about or some other feature that would deal with basically a six-legged intersection, where we now have those left-out only or right-out only, including these two points of access that go into the neighborhood. And it was done through a traffic engineering study with several options, and this was the best, and the owners agreed to it.
And the owner...
Is still the owner.
Still the same owner?
Yes.
Any other questions for staff? Yes. Commissioner Johns.
Actually, mine's for Linda also.
Okay.
If I remember Backyard Taco, didn't we have a, wasn't it an entrance-only? And we made it 20 feet so that half-fire could get out? I don't know what ended up with that when staff started working with them, but it wasn't a full 24-foot wide. It was just a entrance-only from the community.
That's correct. And so what we have on the Backyard Taco side is exactly what's proposed on this side with the same signage and everything, including the vinyl fencing, which is Agratopia's requirement. Yes.
Any other questions for Bob from the commission or staff? Okay. Before I close the public hearing, I want to make sure, is there anyone that wanted to speak on item number 12 that did not get their slip in? Okay. All right, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. I'll bring it back up to the dais for comments. Or a motion?
Well, I got a...
Okay. Commissioner Ailer.
I just, more to say it in the record, I know it's more, nothing more than that, but I have an issue with that 42-foot wall. I know it, I would prefer it more in the center of the building instead of being, hanging out there, so they could still get their signage onto the freeway ultimately. That's what we're designing, is a billboard on the building, which I don't find to be the best part of the architecture. And then, there's nothing we can do on the entrance into Heartland, though I think this is a learning experience for the future if we see this into other areas that we might have to think about how it's considered into how it'll affect the neighborhoods into the future. So... So, um, nothing we can do on this one, but something we can learn from, because I think everybody would like to get rid of it, but there is a need for it, um, when it comes to a life-safety reason for both properties, so something we need to look at. Thank you.
Uh, actually, I have a few comments before you, before your motion. Um, you know, I, I feel like, uh, you know, this is a unique property, uh, in the community, and I feel like we're kinda up against the HOA too, because I, again, I just know the rigor that you have to go through to get through the HOA, uh, and the design to get through the HOA. Not that they have more say than what we have here at the dais, but that, in this community in particular, they have a huge influence into what happens in their community. Um, and so I, I know that there was some comments about posting, uh, and that, that the community may have found out late about this, and I would just wonder if their HOA must have had a public meeting, I would hope, about this, um, before it even came to us. So I, I do feel a little, a little sad for the residents, because I feel like there are a few that, especially in this area, that are not comfortable with what's going in. Um, and maybe not so much user-generated, just size of building and, and proximity of building. So what I'm hoping we can do here, uh, as a town, is, is help our residents in such of a way that, um, you know, for me, I'd like to see a little bit more enhanced landscaping. It's, I think it's fair to ask. Um, I, I don't think we're gonna be able to do anything with the, uh, driveline, and certainly if life safety says it needs to be there, we're gonna take their lead on why it needs to be there. Because if something happens, then we'll be like, "Man, why was there a driveline there?" Again, we can't really give on the life safety, but I think the place we have room to give is to enhance the landscape. Um, and I know it seems like a small pebble in a large ocean, that, that is LA Fitness right there. And I hope that LA Fitness understands the community in which that they're entering. It's so, uh, it's so unique to our, our, our community, our town, and really the nation, like they said, it's such a unique piece. Um, and that they would wanna continue to be like every other, uh, uh, business that's in this community. You've got the beautiful restaurants to the south, um, you know, they did a great job on Bar, Bar None, I think is what it, in the barn right there. A phenomenal piece, right? And they're all small locally-owned businesses, so, um, we are tight about big bucks people, we understand the need for them, and, and they're gonna provide a need, and, and maybe LA Fitness will be a walk-to-LA Fitness, who knows? But, uh, so with that, I would say that the only thing I would like to add in this, uh, approval is enhanced landscaping, uh, across the, what would that be, the west, the west side, and that backs up to the community there. Um, and I'm not looking for over-landscaping, I'm looking for larger landscaping, uh, so it looks like it's been there a little bit longer. And I think you can do that by just up in your trees, or, you know, um, maybe instead of a, uh, one gallon, it's a five-gallon stuff that I'd put into. Commissioner Johns, I see some comments.
Yeah. Um, I, I know they're, going back to that drive, um, I know that they mentioned that it was a life, life-safety issue, but we've dealt with it, um, in the past where we've put an OXBOX gate on for a life-safety drive. So unless staff has another reason beyond just life-safety, that might be another option to be able to just gate it, and if there was a fire exit or fire issue, um, now, if circulation and, and something else that's deeper, because I know this has been a very sensitive area, um, then we can look at that, but that might be an option that, that traffic might wanna look at, and I just wanted to put that out there.
And, Commissioner, I, I agree, I think that this was part of an overall plan approval for life-safety and, and traffic flow. So if we were to gate this one, I, we would have to, I, I think would, uh, throw a wrench in the flow. Linda?
I don't remember gates being discussed as part of the research, so I can't respond to whether or not that would even be feasible, but we can certainly look at it, but I don't believe it was part of the study, because the whole purpose of the study was to circulate people out of a area, disperse traffic as, as best as we could with limited access back to Higley. This property has access off of Higley.
Mm-hmm.
And Agritopia Loop.
Yeah.
So if you direct us to take a second look at that gate, we certainly will, but I do not believe it was studied, because that was not the intent of providing those two points of access, um, for residential only back into the community.
And Chairman, if I may, I, I think...
Yeah.
Even though that it is intended to probably handle flow, I think as you look at it physically, and I asked this during study session too, I do not think this will be a, a path of choice for most people leaving this commercial site, because of the narrowness of the streets and the roundabout way that it gets you back out to the arterial, so I'm not sure it's going to be a, a heavily-used option, not that it won't ever be, but that it won't be a heavily-used option to the neighbor's benefit, I believe, yeah, so...
That was kinda my question regarding the Backyard Taco, you know, they're living with that, that rear one now. Um, and honestly, I think, I think, again, back to the community, I don't know that Agritopia would even want to see a gate put in there. The community itself may, may not even be on, on the same page with that. Yeah. All right.
Well, I wanna make a motion, we have a question though, on, first of all, your request for stipulation on more mature landscaping is, is pertinent only to the west boundary? Is that correct?
That, I believe what, the west boundary is what backs up to the community, is that correct? I wanna make sure I'm...
It does, yes.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Okay, so it's not holistic to the side, just the west boundary?
That backs up to the community, that, yes, correct.
And to make sure, as I make this motion, that I understand that the commission's in consensus, just by a knot of heads, is there, is, is everyone okay with that stipulation being added?
I think Commissioner Ailer has something...
Yeah, I want a, a little modification, that is, that when the pad comes in, that also has, since you have visible signs, that, that will be held to that same standard. So the west side and the pad, so...
But I think the concern, Commissioner Caveney, was more just along the building, to soften the building, so it doesn't need to be along the whole west side, but to break the mass of the building was, was more the concern that I heard from the resident.
It's specific to the landscaping areas, between the, the future buildings and the existing homes.
Okay. Real quick, Linda, where are you at? You understand what we're asking for there?
Yes, we're very comfortable in making sure the landscaping is enhanced and upsized. We understand your concern.
Okay.
But in the specific location?
Yes, on the west side of the pad and LA Fitness.
Yeah.
And I'll try to fill in my motion here.
Let's get a little, vice chair, a little more clarification, so is it just trees and shrubs, or is it just shrubs, or are we talking everything that's in that area?
I'm talking everything in that area.
Okay, 'cause the trees right now, they're 36-inch boxes, um...
Yeah, those are actually pretty big. But you can go bigger.
Yeah, you can.
And it costs.
Yeah.
And once you jump into those bigger boxes, it's, it, the cost is pretty significant.
Well, it's only a few hundred to go from a 36 to a 48.
Well, and, and I'm...
Depending on the species.
Yeah, I don't, I don't ask for a lot, but in our, at our school, we put in the 42...
48.
48, uh, in our playfields this summer, because we wanted instant tree, and a 48 is an instant tree. Uh, not that 36 isn't big, but 48 is bigger. And there'll be lots of comment, again, they're not lots of comments, there can be lots of questions, like, "Well, 48 takes longer to take and mature into the ground," but the cost difference was only a, it's only a few hundred dollars.
Right, per tree.
Yeah, per tree.
And it's just the nine trees on that side?
Yeah.
Okay.
We wanna make sure that's in the minutes, that a 48-inch is bigger than a 36. We wanna make sure that's in the notes. Okay, thank you, Chairman.
And a patent.
And a patent, yeah.
Okay, so, all right, are we okay? Are we ready for motion? Let me give this, oh, sorry.
The only other stipulation, unless there's...
Oh, the parking spot.
Not to do it, would be to add in the removal of that one parking stall that backs into the, uh, it's that ADA accessible.
Yeah, and I meant to add that, I apologize, I think that's, uh, we're one over, so it's reasonable to pull that one spot, and I think everyone understands which spot we're talking about, makes sense to not back into the, um, the crosswalk there.
Okay, with all that, uh, let me make a motion, I move to approve the fact and approve DR 16-54, the LA Fitness at Agritopia, subject to the four conditions already noted in the staff report, and adding the following two stipulations. First, that the landscaping between the future structures, the proposed structures, and the existing homes be enhanced, to be more mature, and between the pad site and the existing homes be enhanced, and that the single parking stall that currently backs into, um, a crosswalk be eliminated for safety reasons. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion is made by Commissioner Caveney, a second by Commissioner Froelich. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Um, I'm gonna call for a quick break. Um, we're gonna take a five-minute restroom break, uh, and the next item up is item number 16, DR 16-47, and there's like 30 that wanna speak on that one too.
Okay, we're gonna mosey on back together and get, uh, get moving on our next item. Commissioner Froelich did have to leave for the evening, and, uh, alternate, uh, Band is gonna come up and, and take his place for the rest of the evening, so... All right, we are gonna move on to item number 16, which is DR 16-47, the Learning Experience Daycare. Um, oh, Ashley, you've got all the fun ones tonight.
I do, I do.
Yes. Ashley, um, so, a, as you give your quick synopsis, we really wanna be talking about that exit on Barberita is the, um, still that key piece, so maybe you can talk about some of the great headway we've made with that exit in particular.
Great, that was my plan, was to be very brief and just cover, um, you know, what, what this was continued for. So this was continued back in March to this hearing to allow the applicant time to have a traffic study completed, um, which has been done, so just to orient some of the commission members, again, this is off of Higley Road, south of Guadalupe, but right at the northeast corner of Higley and Barberita. Barberita is a local street, um, accessed, uh, primary, the primary access to residential. Um, so the study that was done looked at... So the study that was done looked at two different scenarios. The first being allowing access on Barbarita, allowing the right-in, right-out access only on Higley, and then obviously the circulation through to the emergency room site and then out onto Guadalupe Road to the north. And they also considered what the traffic would look like if there was, if there was just emergency access only onto Barbarita. So what the study found essentially was that the existing intersection of Higley and Barbarita has a very poor level of service. The study did recommend maintaining that access point for the daycare center. However, our traffic staff has reviewed the study and looked at the impacts to the Higley-Guadalupe intersection if that access point was closed. And based on the minimal impacts to that intersection, although there will be increased U-turns, they have recommended that the Barbarita access point be closed and used for emergency access only, so as to not increase the burden at that intersection that's already has a poor level of service. So you'll notice in the staff report, staff has added a condition that that be, serve as emergency access only.
With a gate?
Correct.
Yeah, so then I think it's good to be note, for those of you that are here, that, so that area will be gated off and it will have a Knox box on it. So if the fire department, it will be a crash gate or a Knox box, you know?
We don't have detail on that at this point.
But nonetheless, it'll be gated off, so it cannot be used with the normal public flow. That'll all be pushed off to Higley Road, which I think was the biggest concern that really the neighborhood had. And so I commend you guys for coming out like you did last month and allowing us to extend this to where we're at today. Are there any questions for staff? Is the applicant here? And if they are, would they like to make a presentation? Thank you for coming back. If I remember, you come from Colorado?
That's right.
Yeah. And you got out. Didn't you get a snowstorm this week?
Well, we had, it was snowing when we left this morning.
Yeah.
So to come from that to 100 degrees, it's just a little shocking. A little shocking for us.
Yes.
So first, thank you for letting us, again, address this issue as requested. And I have to say, I know that everybody had some concerns that a traffic study wasn't already engaged, but the level of trips based on the daycare use didn't require it. So we did go ahead and engage the traffic study at no small expense. I was a little shocked at how spendy that was. But as Ashley said, based on the traffic study, we were surprised, frankly, that it is recommended, and I have some copies if you need to see them. Scenario one does recommend that Barbarita access is granted. There is an acknowledgement that level of service is a concern, and it will continue to be regardless of this project. The traffic engineers addressed it as, we have a safety concern, and to us, the number of increased U-turns is a much greater concern than a level of service. So we are obviously going to do whatever we need to, to move the project forward. If that means it's emergency access only, then we're willing to do that. Although, we did engage the traffic study and pay for that traffic study that does show that the Barbarita access may actually decrease cut-through traffic. And again, I can provide anybody with copies of it that would like to see it. So we're willing to go either way, as I said, to please both planning and zoning and the neighborhood. But our understanding was that engaging this traffic study, and then also frankly, we purchased a property with a Barbarita address. So we went in assuming, possibly at this point, very incorrectly, that we would have Barbarita access because that's actually the address that we purchased. But as I said, we are here to move this project forward and get through these hurdles so that we can continue to build the daycare on this site.
Are there any questions for the applicant from the commission or comments? Okay, Commissioner Cavani?
On the addressing point, then you're obviously seeking a revision of that address off of Higley now, right? Is that one of the goals?
Well, if we don't have a Barbarita access, then we'll have to have that.
Makes sense. Well, and the way you oriented your building originally, I think it really wasn't a Barbarita-facing property anyway. So I think that makes a lot of sense to...
Right. But there was, the flow-through was what we, and I would, one other thing I would like to point out that I don't think was necessarily addressed last time and that hasn't come up, there is an assumption that we will be granted access, joint access, from the emergency room. They have not agreed to give us that. So if, and they haven't agreed not to frankly either. So it may come down to, you know, if we don't have that Barbarita access and they don't grant us access, then it may come down to either compelling them to do so on our behalf or we're down to one access with a whole bunch of U-turns onto this daycare site with children. And also, there's been some misconception that this is a traditional school. There is no bus service, there is no pull-through, there aren't parents sitting, they park, they take their, we're talking about little kiddos here. They take their kiddos in, they pick them up. So it's not, you know, I've been at elementary schools at that morning time and that afternoon time. So it's not traffic backed up out into the streets. It's parents stopping and bringing those kiddos in and out, so.
With that said, can staff help me understand the cross-access agreement situation?
Chairman and Commissioners Cavani, can I please have Ashley confirm that when we approved the urgent care, that they were required to provide?
I believe they were.
Yeah, so that's part of the approval. For their plat, their plat will show that they provide cross-access easement. We always do that when we have shared drives.
Thank you, and thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Ehler?
Yeah, I just had, it's a little off-topic, but I just, the wall, which was our other question. I noticed that we have three different types of walls, and I'm just making sure that we're looking at doing the alternate, your SK sheet, which is?
SK1.
SK1.
Correct.
Because you have, in the packet, we have a full eight-foot as an alternate typical screen wall, and then you have your rail one, which is shown as a typical. I just want to make sure that we're going forward with the faux-stone looking.
Right, yes. It's the SK1, so it's not one solid wall, it's broken up with the masonry and whatnot. Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Other comments? I guess the only comment I would say is, thank you for working with the town and the And I would say that it's, this will probably move through on Higley. So I know that you were wanting it to go one way or the other. I would imagine that Higley would probably be the way it's going to, it's going to play out. But again, I want to thank you guys for putting the extra time in and cost, those are thousands of dollars to have those done. So I appreciate you guys doing that. Commissioner Bloomfield? Nothing? Okay. This is a public hearing. Thank you. You'll have an opportunity to speak again. This is a public hearing, and so if you have filled out a yellow card and wish to speak, I'll be calling on you at this time. You will have three minutes. I would ask, though, it's late, if you had something to speak on outside of the Barbarita access point, if there was something else you wanted to speak on, please do so. If you want to come speak on the road, you can do that as well. But at this point, there is an understanding that emergency access only will be on Barbarita. So as I call your name out, if you don't want to speak anymore, that's okay. I've got Scott Cale as opposed to the item and wishes to speak. Scott, come on down. Name and town of residence?
Hi, my name is Scott Cale. Town of residence is Gilbert. Thanks for allowing me to speak. I guess my only concern now is I didn't really have a problem with the daycare center. I just really had a problem with the access onto Barbarita. And my concern was, you made it an emergency-only access, and I didn't understand at the time how you enforce that. But there's a Knox box, you said?
Yeah, so it's a very, it's a very sizable gate. You can't, no one, you cannot drive your car through that thing. And they usually, either it's a crash one that a fire truck would take to literally crash through it, or there's going to be a Knox box, so the fire department gets out and unlocks the gate, because they'll have a key. But it is, these are massive gates. I don't want to, don't think like, you can't drive your car in through it. And it's controlled by the fire department. The gate is not controlled by the applicant. It would be controlled by the fire department.
Okay. That's a very reasonable conclusion for me. I know that, you know, there's a lot of young kids that just moved in on the street. So that's, the worries that we had was the young kids and flooding, the road not being wide enough and all that. So I'm just happy that you've addressed it, and then you addressed my last concern. So, thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for the name.
DeGraffery.
DeGraff, thank you. What was that?
DeGraffery.
DeGraffery. Thank you. I'm sorry. So name and city of residence?
My name is Deana DeGraffery.
Thank you.
And I live in Gilbert. And I had a couple of questions for it. First of all, where the, I live straight across the street from it, and I just want to make sure that the access isn't going to be right in front of my driveway so that for resale value, it would be nice if that was offset so that anyone that, you know, eventually when we want to move, that that wouldn't be directly across the street, you know, bringing questions as far as what that is. The second one is for my neighbor, Mrs. Whittaker, who lives just adjacent to it on the other side. So she's the...
On the north side of the road?
Well, yes, it's on the north side of this road. And her question is, is she would really like to see an actual wall between her house and the daycare facility.
Okay.
And she also wondered what the size of the walls are going to be. I don't think that ever was addressed, at least we don't know.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you. And then I've got Diana Janual. She may have left. She was opposed to the item. I have a Mrs. Whiter?
Whitaker.
Whitaker, thank you. You did, thank you. It was opposed to the item and emergency exit on the, thank you. Patricia Nelson?
Sorry, I was going to ask Patrick.
Oh, oh, Patrick, I'm sorry. Patrick Nelson, no access on Barbarita. Thank you. The next one is, it just says Greg Allen, I am opposed to the item. Okay. Jessica Coort is opposed to the item and does not wish to speak. She says, no access on Barbarita. Please, please keep neighborhood a neighborhood home for the kids. Did you want to speak? Okay. All right, thank you. The next one was Debbie Nelson, and it was opposed to the item, did not wish to speak, was concerned about the excess traffic. Tara Allen was opposed to the item and did not wish to speak. And Andrea Walter was opposed to the item and did not wish to speak. So those have all been called in. Is there anyone else here that wanted to speak in favor or against item number 16 before I move forward? Okay, seeing none. The applicant, you're welcome to come back up if you wanted to address any other things, okay? Thank you. I'd ask staff to come up. Can you answer those couple of quick questions that came up as far as a wall and the height of the wall? Seems to be, walls seem to be the conversation of topic for this country right now.
Yes. So related to the wall, there will be an eight-foot separation fence between the two properties. The landscape setback will actually be on the outside of the wall due to an existing irrigation easement. So there'll be a 15-foot landscape setback and then that eight-foot wall between those two property lines.
Can you kind of explain that a little bit more so, or show it? Here's a good, here's a good visual of the question.
So the property line would be here, and then there's a 15-foot landscape setback and then an eight-foot CMU wall here.
So there's going to be her property, then 15 feet of landscape, and then a wall?
CMU is, sorry? It's a masonry wall.
Masonry wall. Yeah. Uh-huh. Okay. Any other questions for staff? Go ahead.
So there was the question about alignment of that drive aisle as it relates to the driveway across the street. Is there a way to depict that or look at that?
I don't know what there is.
There you go.
It looks like the driveway is right here, is that?
So they are offset. Okay, good.
They're offset.
Because I realize the property, the commercial property is kind of constrained based on where their building is, so it is what it is. But yeah, it looks like it's going to be okay. Deana, yeah.
Commissioner Ehler?
So the emergency driveway that we're looking at dealing with, we have parking off of that. So would we be losing that parking because you wouldn't have, be able to do a T-turn? And then, in essence, would their parking count? So we all right?
They, those are their loading spaces, and they should still be able to get out of those spaces. I, staff took a look at it and, you know?
Well...
Are you, these three?
I mean, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure, but if you're making that basically a dead end...
They could back out this way and then continue on.
So, so they would asphalt. I guess, and that's the other question that I was going to ask, is the driveway access, traditionally we soften it with a DG. Are we still looking at, at an asphalt?
Yes.
So it would look like a street.
With a gate.
You could sign it. You could sign it, just dead end or whatever.
Okay. I just...
I would think that the patrons would realize that that's a dead end very quickly. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments for staff? Questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. Ashley, thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any other 10 o'clock comments? Questions?
Let's talk about the wall. No.
All right, seeing none, I'll call for a motion. You can, Commissioner.
I know it's 10:05, and I apologize, but I just, I want to say that I think this is a great comeback with, by the applicant to address some very serious concerns by the neighbors. You're going to end up having a good relationship with your neighbors because of it, because you've tried and you've worked hard to do this. And I truly think, despite what that traffic study said, that given the current traffic problems, the F-status of that Barbarita-Higley intersection, that adding more volume to that would have created more hazard. So I'm really pleased to see where we're at tonight, and I appreciate the applicant's efforts to do that, and for the neighbors to come out again and to continue to express their concerns. I know this has been several meetings for you, and we definitely appreciate that for coming out. So I just want to express that, that thank you very much for all you've done, and I think we're headed in the right direction, so.
I'll call for a motion.
I've been moving a lot tonight, but I'm willing to keep moving, so.
Chairman?
Oh, go ahead. You wanted it?
Commissioner Bloomfield?
Chairman, I recommend that we approve item number DR 16 dash 47 with all stipulations per the staff report.
I'll second. Motion's made by Commissioner Bloomfield, the second by Commissioner Cavani. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, where are we? Item numbers 17 and 18, they are GP 16 dash 08 and Z 16 dash 01, American Groves, minor general plan amendment and a rezoning.
Mr. and Mrs. Commissioner, good evening.
Good night, Gilbert.
Okay, good night. So we had this case, these two cases actually come in front of you back in February, so I want to be brief, go through them fairly quickly. Tonight, we're asking you to make a recommendation again on the same two cases. And with that said, I'm going to go right into, with your permission, go right into the use permit, which ties into the same case as well?
Please.
Okay. So the property that we're talking about tonight, the subject site, is, it's off Elliot's and 29th. Elliot being to the north and 29th place being to the west. The three properties we're talking about tonight, three subject properties, they equal 6.48 acres of land. And the map in front of you will show you that. History on this property, it was rezoned back in 2005, had a general plan amendment that went through and also a rezoning. And in April of 2006, it pre-plat, and eventually 2006, same month, the design review board approved the site plan landscape for offices and some residential along the back. The general plan, land use exhibit shows the property. It's, its classification is Zer dash 1, and to the north, it's neighborhood office. General plan compatibility. Now, I'll focus on goal number three. Manage to grow, to achieve an efficient and orderly... Manage to grow, to achieve an efficient and orderly community by promoting developments where the resources, infrastructures are in place. That's the case at this property here. It's been, it had a few of the properties in question tonight. They had property on them, they had homes on them, I believe, but now they're vacant, and it's all vacant land. Our exhibit, it shows a 6.8 acres of land. What we're asking for in the rezoning is to, we're zoning it to SF 35. When we look at the residential component of this, you look at the compatibility. As I said before, back in February, a major impact was made on this site when the high school came into play, which was built back in 1987. That being said, it's a very large facility, and it actually extends all the way down to 29th, I'm sorry, to Mesquite, which has, I believe, an elementary attached to it as well. Tonight, what we're looking at doing is going through a general plan to take the neighborhood commercial off and turn it into residential, and then rezone the entire piece to accommodate, I believe it's SF 35, which with the use permits, you can do a concrete living, which is what we want to do with, with the use permit. Now, I'm not going to cover this just yet because it'll come into play in the, in the use permit, but there's a pretty significant amount of public notification that was done on the site, a lot more than was required by code. So, on these two cases, staff is recommending a favorable recommendation to the town council for GP 16-08 and Z 16-21. And with your permission, I'll go right into the next case. I put this image in front of you to kind of just give you an idea of what we're working on right now. It's a design review application that is coming to you. It's in, it's in review process now. This is just conceptual only, it's not the end product. But, same site. This image here shows a site plan on it. It just shows you the same, the same image we just saw earlier. It's Elliot to the north, 29th to the, to the west, and then there's Gilbert Drive, which is a private road, and that's with the high school, and that's to the east. Same history applies to this. As mentioned before, you, this image here shows you surrounding neighbors, the high school, and it shows a site plan, kind of superimposed on the site to kind of give you an idea. So, the use tonight for the American Groves facility, they're proposing senior assisted living facility, over 100,000 square feet. It's going to offer single and two-story buildings on the site. The intent is to create a senior living community that is offering integrated assisted living, independent care living. I also wanted to mention that, in the report, it says that the residents that live here would more than likely not drive, but I'm going to change that to say there is a chance that up to 25% may drive their own vehicles on the site. They're proposing to have it open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and basic operations for the residents would be meal preparation, housekeeping, laundry, and private transportation if needed. So here's a site plan that is, is that, it's come to us, and it's, it's at the design review level, and it's been agreed upon. What I, what I did for, for the commission was, in purple, we have the main point of access, which is off of Elliot. As we've said before, there's a pork chop to control traffic. The second point of access is going to be off of 29th. It's obviously smaller, but it's in purple here to show you its location. I put a yellow line to show you that if fire services or emergency services had to get to the inside, to the entire site, they could actually get around the entire property. The red lines here and here show you that this is going to be gated with a Knox box to control only emergency services going beyond the site. What you see on this site is, it's a pathway that can accommodate a fire truck, but it's going to have grasscrete, so it'll be part of the landscaping. But the only full, the full roadway through this whole site's going to be from this side here, on the west side, all the way to the, to the east side. So, there's four items that we're looking at, that we have to, they're findings that are required to, when we come to commission and also for approval. And staff would contend that this is not going to be detrimental to the health and safety or general welfare to the people that live in the site. If nothing else, by having the, the general plan and zone change go forward, it's going to remove neighborhood commercial from the north, which is 2.24, sorry, 2.24 acres of land, change it back into residential. This per traffic analysis that was done, traffic study, it will decrease traffic. It'll lessen the, the impact to the site. There were over, I believe, 20-plus types of uses that were applicable to the neighborhood commercial that's to the north. About eight to 10 of those are actual uses that would, would apply to the site, most of them being office-type uses, which would generate a little more tra-- well, a lot more traffic than, than what we're proposing tonight with the issue permit. So, number two, the proposed use conforms per the general plan. The general plan is a policy guide that we use to help guide us in the growth of the town, and this, this site, or I should say, this use, staff would contend that follows the general plan, promotes different possibilities for different types of lifestyles. The circulation is being analyzed for the best way to navigate the site and also to have a less of an impact off of 29th. They've, they've talked about ways to navigate traffic issues with a pork chop off of Elliot, and also to coexist with the high school that's right to the, to the east. The proposed use conforms to the condition requirements and standards of the, of the code. As conditioned, staff would agree that the site plan will, will live up to that. Obviously, we have a design review application that we still need to go forward with, and you'll be seeing that here very soon within the next month. So, as I said, I mean, I'm just kind of going over the same ideas. This, this use permit has less of an impact that, that could currently happen now. We did bring the traffic engineer to answer any questions in regards to that. You should have a copy of the traffic, the TIA, which supports that this would have less traffic counts on, on the site. There was a comment that was made at one of the, at one of the meetings, and I'll get into that in a second, about possible construction through CIP off of 29th. Staff investigated, and we found that the only CIP projects that are planned for 29th, there are none. It's off of Mesquite, which is to the south. I think I have a map here that will show you that. So, right down here is, is Mesquite Street, and there are, I believe, a sidewalk improvement project that's supposed to happen here in front of the school, but there are no, there's no CIP projects that are planned for 29th. I wanted to just, I know it's late, so briefly cover that per the code, we're required to have a pretty extensive public participation process. That includes signage, that includes letters to the, to the owners. What we did was, we had the, these two cases that you, actually all three, but the first two cases were the general plan and the zone change. They came to you February. Because of concerns that the, that the public brought up, the applicant decided to go through that process again with those two cases. So we had two brand-new meetings. So we had a total of two neighborhood meetings for the zone change and the general plan. We went beyond the 300-foot requirement for the notice to the public. We went to 660 feet to the north. We went to 660 feet to the west, and we went up to over, I believe it was over, almost 2,000 feet to the south. Not only that, they, we're talking to the neighbors, we decided it would be best to have more than one sign on the property. We had a sign for these two cases and for the use permit, which actually was two signs that face Elliot and two signs that face 29th. They had an additional meeting on top of that, was, that was totally voluntary, that was for the, the neighborhood meeting. I'm sorry, it was just an outreach meeting that they had, I believe, back in March. All this information detailed in the packet. But they did all this in order to satisfy any issues that the, that the public had. And at these meetings, not only did we discuss the applications at hand, but they talked a little bit about the design. And the applicants have been more than willing to change portions of this design. I showed you the image in the front to kind of just give you an idea of what's coming forward. But they're trying to create something that's going to fit well within this acre lot area, something that is not going to stick out. They're, they're considering all types of angles. They even proposed doing types of design for the parking that's going to have more of a hometown feel, as with what you see in front of you now. They're looking at possible ways to mitigate noise off the backside of the property next to the neighbors by using large canopy trees. So, this concludes my presentation. I apologize for being so, so quick, but I know it's late. Applicant is here tonight. I can answer questions that you may have. I'm sure I passed over items. I did, my, my recommendation, my recommendation is to approve the funding of fact for this use permit.
Thank you.
Also for the, I already said, for the zone change and the, the general plan amendment.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Gilbert. Any questions for staff at this point? Seeing none. Is the, if the applicant is here and they'd like to make a presentation, you're welcome to do so. We'd encourage you to stay comfortable. No, if you want to make a presentation, you can. Okay. This is a public hearing, so I will open it to the public. If anyone is here that wishes to speak, please make sure to fill out the yellow or green form. I've received one from a John Whedon Reedmore. Linda, did he leave, or is he? I think he may have left.
Chairman, he did approach me. He had questions regarding his CCNRs and if they would compete or override town council decision on zoning.
Yeah.
Or use permit. And I just quickly shared with him the municipal's authority for general plan and rezoning decisions.
Thank you. He was, just wished to speak. He didn't put if he was in favor or against, but he is not here. So, with that, is there anyone else that wanted to speak on this item? All right.
Your card.
Oh, your card. Okay. You just want to come down and bring your card with you, and your name and city of residence. Thank you. Thank you for staying so late. You can just do it right there. It's fine.
Hi. My name's Sarge Glenn. I live right across the street here in Gilbert on 29th Place, so. Anyway, I would welcome any kind of development on this property, especially something as nice as this. Lived there for 11 years, and it, it gets old living across from this lot. It is a four-wheel-drive, dusty, muddy, noisy lot the way it's currently been used, and I think this is a great use for the property and would highly support it, living across the street, so.
Thank you. All right. Is the applicant, do you want to respond to any of the comments that were made? Okay. Is there any questions for Gilbert or the applicant from the commission? Seeing, seeing none. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring it back up to the dais for any comments and/or a motion. We have to do each item separately. There's 17, 18, and just 17 and 18 right now. Go ahead, Commissioner Cavani.
Thanks. So, just to reiterate what happened last month, I think this is a great use for this site. I love the fact that this operator plans to engage with the high school as well and some of their cross, cross servicing and whatever. I think that's a great use, and that they're pleased to be on this site, given that relationship. I've also seen their other product nearby at Lindsay and Guadalupe, and find it to be an absolutely attractive and well-developed site, so I have no less expectations for what they'll do here. So I think it's a wonderful use and wonderful development.
Thank you. That'll call for a motion.
A motion, we approve GP 16-08.
A motion made by Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johns. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Item number 18.
Motion, we approve Z 16-21.
I have a motion by Vice Chair for Z 16-21. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Johns. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Item number 19, I did not attach this to the other two, so we have to go through the process. See how I caught that? Right? Well done. So, we are now going to discuss 19, item number 19, which is UP 17-1000, American Groves, conditional use permit for, conditional use permit. Gilbert, please tell me you don't have to go through this whole presentation again.
No, I thought we just covered that.
We did. Fantastic.
Nice presentation.
Very good, Gilbert. The applicant is here. Would you like to speak on this item? All right. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this item and then has not filled out a yellow card, please do so at this time. I've not received any, not seen any. Okay. Ask the applicant if he'd like to respond to any comments? Nope. Is there any questions for staff, for staff or the applicant from the commission? Seeing none. All right. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Comments or a motion?
Motion, we approve UP 17-1000.
Motion made by Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner--
Vanda.
Vanda. Yeah. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. See, I'm still on it even this late at night. Didn't get caught in a loophole. Yeah. All right. Item number 20. For those of you that are still here, God love you. Thank you. Z 16-11 revised sign code. This is what we want to talk about at 10:30 at night, folks. Catherine, we love you, so give us what you got.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for staying and, and hearing our item on the public hearing for the revised sign code. This item, we did discuss last month, where we went through, kind of gave an overview on the proposed draft. I just have a couple of updates on some recent stakeholder input, and again, I just want to acknowledge that several staff, both legal and planning, have been involved in this for many months, and I certainly appreciate all the support that we've had on this topic. From the Supreme Court ruling, just to emphasize again, that we can still continue to regulate signs in terms of whether the size of them, the height, the location. We can make distinctions between lighted and unlighted, changing message, commercial and residential property, so you will see that we did retain most of that. Some of the other key concepts guiding the process, in addition to the legal requirements, we made an effort to improve the content just to make it easier to use, put some things in table format. We also retained as much of the existing code as possible. We've tried to keep distinct signage in both, in the heritage district and in the gateway character areas, and certainly were guided by preserving our high-quality environment and community appearance and making the process transparent. Some of the recent input, I just want to briefly cover. The first has to do with signs that you may be familiar with, which are directional temporary signs that direct folks to things like an open house, a resident at a, at a residence, a residential activity like a garage sale or an estate sale. We have attempted to come up with language that we added to the temporary sign table just for residential districts. We have worked to try to be as content-neutral as possible. It's, at this point, we've done our best. I'm not sure whether legal is, is completely supportive of this notion, but this is what we've thrown out there. That would basically retain a rough equivalency to what we had in the code before, which was up to six signs that could be used to, to direct someone to a residential activity such as an open house without calling them open house signs. And I did, the gentleman from the Intergovernmental-- And I did, the gentleman from the Intergovernmental Representative from the Southeast Valley Association of Realtors did let me know that they haven't formally discussed it at their board meeting, but they are supportive of the concept that we've put forward and they appreciate us looking at this issue and making an effort, again, to keep the rough equivalency to what the code previously had. The next issue I wanted to talk, touch on was, I did forward a memo to you from the Chamber of Commerce, and one of the topics that they did raise had to do with window signs. And they are asking that we increase the allowable area of the window sign from 25% to 100% of any window. They would also like the code to allow neon signs and painted wall signs in more zoning The other two items I wanted to briefly cover were electronic changing message displays on freeway signs. And we did get feedback from the International Sign Association recommending that we increase from what we're proposing. We are proposing that the allowable area be 50% of the freeway sign, and they are recommending that we increase that to 75%. They also recommend that we allow neon in more zoning districts than, than just the Heritage Village Center. And then the last topic I had for you is we do have a local business that would like to place a sign similar to what I'm showing you there. It's, it's similar to a marquee, marquee sign. This one is actually mounted on the wall, has changeable message, and it has exposed light bulbs around the perimeter. So they are, they are interested in being able to have this sign in more options within the community right now. Again, we, marquee signs are allowed in the Heritage Village Center. We do allow some unique signage options also in the Gateway Character Area. So things, you have seen unique things come in, in Agritopia, for example. So we would appreciate hearing any feedback you may have on these items. At this point, the, the, the single, the single-family residential signs related to directing someone to a residential activity such as an open house, that is in the draft that you have. The, the other items, we're not recommending any changes at this time. So this is a public hearing. We recommend, ask that you please open the public hearing and receive any testimony we may have, and then go into your discussion, and then our motion is, recommends that you move this forward to town council, which they would consider at their 18th meeting. Thank you.
Catherine, thank you. This is a public hearing. I've received three requests to speak cards. The first that I have here is from a Patty Artees. It doesn't say whether you want to speak or not. All right, the person had indicated that they were opposed to the item. And then I've got Clyde Baker wishes to speak. Clyde, you want to come on up? Name and city of residence, and can you let us know if you're in favor or against, or if you just want to speak?
Yeah, well, in favor of our sign that we're trying to propose. That's our sign.
Yes.
The marquee sign.
Agreed.
My name is Clyde Baker. I'm a resident of East Mesa. Our business is located in Santan Village. That's my director there, Tiffany. She directs all our musical productions that we do at our studio. As I've kind of mentioned and sent several messages through, you know, we have over 800 families that live in our studio. It's a great, I think, a great service to the town of Gilbert. Beautiful things that we're doing there. We seat about 160 people in our, in our location, and we have 10,000 square feet at Santan Village. We'd like to add the signage. When I created it with Yesco, which is a very reputable signage company, we have exposed light bulbs, but they're not really used for lighting of the sign, they're more decorative. So throughout the town of Gilbert, as you know, there's lighted signs throughout the town of Gilbert, everywhere. You know, they're on buildings, they highlight buildings, they're back of restaurants, they're strung across in front of my building in Santan Village. So I just wanted to kind of see a little bit more consistency on how, you know, we administer exposed light bulbs. So I'm all in favor of enforcing and making rules as long as it's consistent across the board. So if everyone doesn't have light bulbs in the town of Gilbert, then I'm fine with that. But if you can highlight a building and use exposed light bulbs, and our sign is so significantly smaller compared to highlighting a building, I just wanted to see a little bit more consistency when we do these kinds of things. So I've been kind of going through this process. I don't know, I kind of lost track. It must be a year now, and back and forth, back and forth. So just looking for more options within the town of Gilbert. Santan Village, they doubled our rent, so we are looking at another options in the town of Gilbert, or we have to move out of Gilbert because we can only go downtown or Santan, Santan Village. So we're trying to keep it within town. Of course, our, our, our parents want us to stay here. Both of our students are from Gilbert and Chandler area, and we have been looking around just to accommodate the people so that we can continue doing the business that we do. No decision has been made, and even to this day, no decision has been made. And now we're going to the next level. So I would rather have it resolved at this level rather than going to the next level discussing what I'm discussing right now. So I'm just asking for your input or anything you can share with us so that we can make the plans that we need to do, and time is of essence with us. It's been going on for some time now. Is that how many times I have left here?
Yes.
Seconds, okay. Otherwise, I just want to thank you, Chairman, and the Commissioners for all that you do here. This is the first time we've sat through a meeting like this, and it was a long one, but I really respect what you do. I used to work in a public schools as a principal of a high school, and I do appreciate all that you do within the community. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Clyde. Look at that, perfect timing. All right, the next is James, and James, I can't pronounce the last, the last name. So if you could do that, is in favor of the item, just name and town of residence, please.
Okay, thank you very much. James Carpenter, I'm living Mesa, Northeast Mesa to be exact. And I really appreciate the time, and I'm going to be really fast, but I think that that staff has done a really good job with the code. And we do have, just to back up, I'm here on behalf of the Arizona Sign Association and the International Sign Association. And then I, like I was saying, the staff has done a really good job with the code. It's well laid out, easy to understand, easy to read. But I do have a couple suggestions. One of them is more functionality for the electronic message centers along the freeways. Right now, you allow 500 square feet, and the proposed code reads 50% of that, which would be 250 square feet. The documentation that, that we have based on traffic studies done by engineers indicates a larger size is needed and necessary to operate and function well. And we strongly support that. I, based on my experience too, I would not propose a 250-square-foot electronic message center freeway sign. They're very expensive, and if you're going to propose one, 70, the 75% of it, I think it's 375 square feet, would is just about right. It'll work well. If you get to 250, it may work okay, depends what you put on there, but it's just limiting what you can put on that sign severely. So that's just more of a functionality issue and one that will work better for the end user and for the intended viewers of the sign. And the other one is, as the chamber recommended, we suggest that neon be allowed. I know the sign, it got mentioned a lot tonight, backyard taco. Right now, they have exposed strip lighting that looks like neon, but it's not neon. It's like LED strip lighting in a, in a flexible tube. I would suggest that neon is a kind of a lost art, and in this area, there's very few shops that do neon anymore, and I think to, to limit it, the Heritage District looks fantastic. The city's done a great job there. But to limit it in other places, there are some sign, national sign programs that do spec out neon, and there are some end users that want a retro look, and I could go on and on about neon. It's, it's much more efficient than it used to be. There used to be safety issues with it, but now that it's, has electronic ballast, it's very energy efficient, and it's, it's, I think it's a fantastic-looking sign. You cannot create the same colors through LED. It looks fantastic. So I encourage that you consider it throughout the city. And even if you do, it costs a lot more than LED. You won't see a whole lot of it, but you would see some of it here and there. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Catherine?
I actually have.
Or comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Question for the resident, actually, since you're on, dealing with the sign, I think.
You want James, you want Clyde, James coming up?
Yeah, sorry. Just since you seem to know signs. And I don't know if you know the sign, but in comparison, because I, I'm a little leery of going to 75%, but to give me something in scale. Do you know the, like, the size, like the Autoplex on the 202?
Chandler.
The, the one in Chandler, not ours, because ours is smaller, but do you know the size of that one?
That's a lot bigger.
Yeah, I know.
You're talking like 1,000 square feet. I don't know, I can't remember the number, but I'm glad you, that's a great question, because the medical center at Higley and Power Road, that sign is, I think about, I can't remember the exact number, it's well over 300 square feet. It might even be 400 square feet. And when you look at it, it doesn't, I go by there, I remember when I first learned what the sizes was when I was doing a, well, for another, for another sign on Highway 60, we looked at the other sizes of the sign. And that one, I think, is close to 400, so that would become non-conforming, which I, and I, when you look at that, that size looks pretty, pretty appropriate, and it doesn't seem too big to me. It, it almost looks like it's smaller than 400. It could be 370 in the range that, that I'm requesting right now for the.
But, but the one that Commissioner Ayler is talking about off the 202, that's way bigger than.
Oh, yeah. It's, I would say three times, at least.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're not talking that big?
No.
Yeah, I just kind of looking at, I mean, I like this signage, but like, you see in LA, on your way to LA through all the desert towns, those things get monstrous, and I just think, like, I don't want to get to that level if we're looking at something that makes sense that with signage change.
And it's, it's important to note too, when regulated, as you're properly regulating illumination here in the town at 3/10 foot candle above ambient light, so the sign itself is not going to be very much brighter, if not, in some cases, even less brighter than a standard static sign. So it's, it's, when properly regulated, it's not something that's in your face and is too bright. Here in the, in the town, it works well because you have, you've got it set at the right illumination level, so.
Well, that's good to know.
To me, that's the key when it comes to EMCs. Everything else isn't as critical, but the illumination levels from a regulatory standpoint is by far the most important aspect.
And Catherine, we're taking in that idea, illumination? Okay. And then, real quick last on the neon. So just in, I see in older areas, the neon, is the tubing actually, I love what we've done with the Heritage District. I think it looks awesome. I just wonder, like, when you see one-offs, it works well because there's a grouping, but I'm thinking, the one that I'm thinking of it in my head is, I think it's in Chandler, is a Hoosier Cafe, and they haven't always kept up with all the, the illumination to, is, is the neon a little more controllable now than, than it was? Because that was done in the 80s with all the chrome.
Well, that's a, that's a good question. Neon, when it's on, it's on, and it's, when it's off, it's off. So there's no, the, in relation to controlling it, you can't adjust it like you can LED lights. You can, you can adjust them more now than you, even you could a few years ago. But I just think it, to not allow it, it just, there, there's some end users, like, very few, but there's some that will want to have that look. And in my mind, a facade that has similar stuff doesn't look very good. If you have variety, it, it does liven up a facade substantially. And I heard you guys talk a lot, about a lot of different facades. But that's, that's, that's what I believe, you know, it's that it does create something that you can't create with any other type of sign, so.
Thank you, thank you for coming and giving us.
You bet, thank you, yeah.
Any questions for Catherine? Vice Chair.
Catherine, has the, the revised sign code, was that presented, or was the RDC allowed an opportunity to read through that? And if they, for any comments, and if they did, what's their thoughts on allowing neon outside of the Heritage District?
Thank you, Chairman Sipple, Commissioner Anderson. I did present to the Redevelopment Commission last month, and I will be going back to them on the 17th. They did not have any questions or concerns at that time, so they did not share any specific feedback about the potential use of neon outside the Heritage District. We primarily focused on was anything in the new, in the sign code, has it changed standards within the Heritage District?
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Ayler.
So, last question on my signage, and it's dealing with the marquees and how, I think it's a good idea. I like interesting signage and different things and how we deal with it. And it's the hard part of getting that type of signage without opening Pandora's Box of having crazy amount of different things going on that weren't unintentional for the sign code. But just because I see, I've seen their sign multiple times, I've been in their establishment with my daughter, so I know your sign quite well. But I just wonder, how is that coming, coming along? Just a quick blur of how are we looking at dealing with that?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The, the sign in question, again, as I've described it, is, is very similar to a marquee-like sign, which we have very detailed standards in the Heritage District that relates to the changeable message and the illumination around it. It even allows some flashing and blinking just to encourage, you know, kind of a, a unique style in the downtown. We also, in the Gateway Character Area, have some opportunities to do different signage, actually by ordinance in those areas. So those were two options that we did mention, is that they can pursue that type of signage in those areas. The question comes, do we allow something like that in other commercial districts? And so part of the brainstorm is, well, is, is this intended to be something that's at a pedestrian level? That it's somebody standing, for example, in line to get tickets? And so they're seeing, you know, the, they're seeing something creative and that is more at their level, so they know what the show is. So we've looked at, are there certain standards that we would specify, change a wall sign that has changeable message that's just more at a certain size and scale? The other option is, do we allow marquee signs in other zoning districts? You know, do we allow it in regional commercial, and do we allow it in general commercial, for example? And, but then it's not, again, because we're trying to stay as content neutral as possible, that would be, any business could have this type of sign then, under those parameters. And then we brainstormed, well, do we limit it to a particular use in the, you know, entertainment, recreation indoor? And then again, that starts to move into that realm of starting to be more content-driven. And so frankly, you know, we've kind of ended back in the circle of, well, we have two areas, significant areas in town where something like this could be pursued, and, and that's why we wanted to hear your feedback.
Okay.
You have feedback?
Well, my feedback is I really like interesting signage, and I'd like to see a way to keep a sign like this and bring it into different areas. But I do understand opening Pandora's Box and, and creating this for everything, especially how, how we're having to deal with the sign code now and how flexible it has to be. So I'd like to see that possibility, and, and I know our staff is really good at working these types of things, but I guess that's my input.
Commissioner Johns.
I know it's late, so I'll be quick. I, I, I joined the stakeholder meetings on these, and I've gone to the Chamber Policy Committee meetings on these, and I just want to, I want to commend staff on what they've done and how, because these are just a small handful of comments that came about, and every comment that was addressed to. every comment that was addressed to staff and Catherine, they've bent over backwards to achieve those. So, this is just the latest comments of dozens. And so, I've learned more than I ever wanted to know about signs, um, by far, but I, I mean, I was just very impressed with how staff handled the public, the stakeholders, and I just want to commend you guys on that. I was very impressed. I, I know the comments that the, the Chamber put about, you know, this, these, most of those comments are from them, and it was mostly how to promote businesses. And, you know, they, they brought up samples of businesses or community, or developments that's failed because of the, the restrictions on signage. But then again, we don't want to look like Vegas either. So, what we decided tonight, I think there's been a lot of work prior to this, we need to take that in consideration, but we want to take those businesses in consideration also. So that's pretty much my comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Banda.
You know, I'm not going to apologize for speaking, because I want to see this meeting go from the third to the fourth, so I can say I was going to have a meeting on the eighth and the fourth. I live right across the street from Backyard Taco, and I will say, I was super excited to see their sign, and then it, and then it did light up. And it is a completely different look, and I feel like we, we could be doing a disservice when people are trying to get that neon look for some of their signs, and then it's LED, and it, it does not have the same effect or feel, or, it's just not as majestic as downtown. But the thing is, is it's big, you could tell they spent a lot of time designing it. They have great intent to make it look good, but because probably of that neon restriction outside the Heritage District, I think it, it doesn't have the same effect. I love seeing that across the street from me. I, I know, I have, that's a difference of opinion, but they're trying to attempt that look, and they can't do it. And that's the problem I have.
Chairman Sipple and Commissioner Banda, my understanding of the, of the sign provisions within Agrotopia, again, are very unique and are not necessarily regulated by the sign code, they have their own zoning ordinance. So I believe that they could have done neon if they had chosen, they may, they did something that replicated it, maybe it was more cost-effective, or something along those lines. But the signage in that area is very different than what we would normally allow. And that, again, is that there's two, there's the gateway character area, which is very distinct, and the downtown Heritage District. And so signage is part of making those areas distinct.
Yeah, and, and let me be clear on that. I'm, I'm not saying that that's the case, uh, and, and they may have chosen to do LED, but my thing is, I, I just fear that, that those who try to do that neon look but are not permitted to do so. So I, I will make that, I, I do apologize for that comment, but.
Other comments? Um, yeah, other comments? We are voting on this tonight, Catherine, aren't we, to recommend approval to the Town Council? Commissioner.
So I guess, in this vote, it's pending, not yet moved, or motioned?
No.
Is there a, the provision for neon is not included, right? It is, it is still, the proposal going forward would be to stay like it is. There's been a request by citizens tonight to consider expanding that. Okay, but right now, we are not considering that in the documentation or the verbiage that is presented. Okay, got it.
Can I clarify something?
Commissioner Johns, yeah.
Also a difference between the neon and the marquee signs that we're dealing with tonight also.
Yeah. Clyde's sign.
So, so I guess on the marquee, is, is it something that, is there another process? If this doesn't, if it only holds those two areas, is there another process that allows or, as in a variance or something to that? This would just take it out of the possibility other than those two areas?
Chairman Sipple and Commissioner Ayler, the, the type of sign we're discussing, we kind of need to break into parts. First is, what, what was, uh, the image that you saw was a wall sign, not a, not technically a marquee sign, because it's not on a marquee structure. We don't allow wall signs that have changeable message, so that's the first part. And the second part is, we strictly prohibit exposed bulbs on signs. So that's town, you know, that's throughout the code. So, in the downtown, there's a, a sign type called a marquee sign that has more details, and under the Redevelopment District Design Guidelines, they're able to do a marquee structure with a sign on it that has changeable message and can have illumination that will flash and blink.
Okay, so, I, I get that, and I appreciate it.
So if we wanted it in other places, something like that, we'd either have to add more zoning districts that could pursue that marquee sign, or we would need to add a sign type that is a wall sign that has changeable message. And one idea we had is that if we did that, would we limit it to being something more at a pedestrian scale, at the way this sign is mounted today, above the entrance to a building or to a suite, and, and limit the size of it. So those were kind of the two, two paths that we've brainstormed to date. But again, we kind of end up back into the general plan that promotes those two areas as distinct and character areas, and it supports the notion that there would be unique things about it. And, and they, they are opportunities, people can locate in those areas, locate their businesses in those areas, and have different sign opportunities.
Catherine, with that thought process, how is that sign outside of the lights that are around it? How is that sign different than Harkins changing their signs with their now showing?
Um, the signs that I am familiar with at Harkins are, are, when you're standing in line, some of them are displayed actually behind the glass. So if they're far enough back, we don't technically consider them a sign for sign code purposes, because they're more interior to the building, and you're standing there and you can see it. Now, I know the one at San Ten Mall, it's mounted, it's, it's internal to the shopping center, or to the, to the mall, so that's significant. And second, it's mounted underneath a very large canopy, so it, it functions very much as its interior to the building. It's not mounted on the wall of the, on the outside. So those are the, those, that's the sign I'm familiar with. I don't know if there's another one that you're describing.
Actually, I'm talking about the ones where they put up, when you're walking up to the ticket booth, they've got all the posters.
The posters, and, and we have typically not categorized those under the, um, as signage, because they're very changeable, they're more temporary in nature, and I think the performing arts centers do something similar, where they may have a promotional poster that they mount.
All right. Other questions for Catherine before I bring it back up to the dais? Okay, Catherine, thank you. Clyde, yeah, go ahead, why not? It's midnight.
Well, we have to help.
Yeah, Seth, yeah, Seth wants to get this thing to the next day, which we've had those before, sir, few and far between.
Yeah, just a quick thing, on, on the Harkins Theater, it's actually a wall, I mean, it's external, it's in the building, and it's changeable, digital. We considered that, but, um, that wasn't allowed, so we just went, actually, I wanted the old marquee kind of system, I figured that would feel better, you know, and, and as, yeah, anyway.
You went nostalgic.
Yes.
Yeah, understood. All right.
So, just my understanding, before you close it, what's in front of us does, leaves everything as is, the marquee is only in those two spots?
It, it does, it leaves it in those two areas. Same with the neon is area-specific, I suppose.
And there's no other process into the future if this, that, that was ultimately my question, that I, we went around a little bit, but there, there is no other process if someone wanted to use a sign like this in our municipality?
Thank you, Chairman Sipple, Commissioner Ayler. I, I apologize, I didn't answer that completely. If, we do have provisions in our code for vary, to vary from sign standards, but that would be things like height and area, because you have some physical constraint on your site. Let's say there's a big hill, and you need to be able to go a little bit higher than what the code allows, because it's simply not visible. So that's more the parameters of what the variance. And again, in the, there are provisions in our planned area developments related to the gateway character area, which allows them to consider alternative signs to maybe what was, is allowed in the code. So, and that, that's a pretty large geographic area.
Okay. Clyde's looking for a new place, he should just buy some acreage and build a massive theater, because he, he's growing. Yeah, yeah, easier said than done. Yeah. All right, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and bring it back up to the dais for additional comments, discussion. All right.
I'm just glad I've already had two Diet Cokes. Admittedly, this is not the most exciting topic for this time of night, and, and so I appreciate that everybody's here and, and taking part, and, sorry, this is, yeah, I'm sorry. But thank you, Catherine, for your efforts on this, and it sounds, and, and I would echo Commissioner Johns, congratulations and appreciation for that, because he's been there and he's witnessed it, so thank you on, from me as well. So, um, as far as signage goes, and, and moving forward tonight, I don't have any comments, and it sounds like there's some real questions, concerns, that people want to have really addressed by us, if, if at all possible, before we send this on to the council. I'm not sure that that's real possible, or it would have been done by Catherine already. So I'm opening it up to, hopefully, any ideas that you guys have on being able to accommodate some real obvious interest in, in having a signage change, so.
Okay. Commissioner.
Well, I just, I'd like to see what we could do, but I think the subcommittee and Catherine and staff has worked through this and probably three, four times over what, what we would look at doing. And my, my worry about helping one is that you ultimately are opening it up for all, and which is, should be that way. That I really like to see if there's still possibility of looking at the wall sign as not a marquee. I know that will, council couldn't make that decision, since we're just making a recommendation, so maybe there's still some room there. I, I personally would like to see if there could be some last minute work on seeing something like that. But for us to craft something, I, I would, I mean, there's just, there's so many aspects that would be hard to be looked at in one shot right now.
Okay, I'll take a stab at it. Catherine, I think seventy-five percent is what you're good with for the freeway signs, right? We want to go from fifty to seventy-five percent? We haven't talked about that one yet, but I think that's what.
Thank you, Chairman Sipple. We, the, in the, in the code before the revisions, it just wasn't clear how much of the sign could be electronic messaging. So we proposed the fifty percent for the freeway signs, and we've heard feedback from a technical standpoint, that it, it really may need to be up to seventy-five percent to be visible.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're probably good with either fifty or seventy-five.
Yeah, I think we can capture the seventy-five percent, given the, the visual that was presented, you know, mentally for us. I also, with that, I also would agree with my other commissioners, that the work that you guys have done in behind the scenes, neon is where neon's going to be, you know? And I would also say that, that type of signage that you were talking about for the show and stuff, is, needs to be where it needs to be, based on the code. So, that's kind of where I'm at, is going ahead and boosting up to seventy-five percent on the freeway marquee signs, the LED, the, that, that part that you were talking about, and then keeping with your recommendation on the neon and, uh, monument-type signs.
We, we didn't talk about it, but the window signs going up to a hundred percent.
Ah, yes. Commissioner Johns, did you have something on that?
I know the Chamber had issues with that one, because Queen Creek just passed a hundred percent, um, window coverage. I'm shaking no, or?
Yes.
Okay. I got that information from them, so I could be wrong. Most of the other communities around us, from my understanding, is twenty-five percent, and I think that's what they're trying to stick to the standards of, and I think it's twenty-five percent now. The, the issues that were brought up during, I'm just kind of reporting what the Chamber talked about, the issues brought up were the, the fact that the new technology, it's not just soaping up windows anymore, it's actually a screen, like a body wrap on a car. They're using it for, not just signage, but for artwork. And then they also talked about, you know, how much of it's art, how much is signage, and it, it got pretty deep, which is not worth tonight, or getting into tonight. But that's kind of the reason why they went for the hundred percent, because they're trying to compete with what Queen Creek is doing in that area.
And Catherine, currently, we're looking at twenty-five percent, and you're proposing to keep at that twenty-five percent? Okay. I'm, I'm okay with staff's recommendation on that one, too. Even though Queen Creek did it, doesn't mean we have to, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't want to say that. So, I think that's where we're at on the four, giving some guidance, twenty-five percent on the, uh, windows and the other items we've already mentioned. Is there anyone that would like to motion something like that? Again, this is going to the Town Council, so we don't get final say, the council will get final say here in a few weeks. Commissioner Bloomfield.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think that we're just recommending exactly as staff has written it for us, we haven't made any changes. Is that correct?
Outside of the seventy-five percent on the freeway marquee, electronic messaging boards, thank you.
Okay, are we ready for?
Yes, sir.
A move that we approve, item Z sixteen dash eleven, revised sign code, with the addition or alteration of adding seventy-five percent allowable on electronic messaging on highway signs?
Motion by Commissioner Bloomfield, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Anderson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, Catherine, congratulations, thank you. Administrative items, planning commission minutes, is there a motion?
Motion to reapprove the planning commission minutes of April fifth, two thousand and fifteen.
Motion been made by Vice Chair Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cavaney, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Communications, report from Chairman and members of the Commission on Current Events. It is National Teacher Appreciation Week, so thank you to all of our educators out there for what you guys do. Anyone else? Okay, item number twenty-three, report from Council Liaison, she's been in bed for about an hour, so she left a while back. Thank Bridget for, yeah, yes. And finally, item number twenty-four, report from our planning manager, Lynda.
Well, the most important thing on my agenda is to thank you, and for good reason. So you all did a wonderful job tonight, and you really represent our community well. Thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you, Lynda. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn.